If I could have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome you to our August the 22nd council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless this time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups should designate a spokesperson to avoid reputation of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices at this time. Mr. Reverend Jay McCag is here from Crossroads Baptist Church to give us our invocation. Could we please stand as he comes and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have to be here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to live in a free country where we're able to come and have our voices heard and help with the decisions that need to be made. Father, we ask for your peace to be poured out upon this meeting tonight. Let everything be done civilly and in order. Let everything be done to bring honor and glory to you. Father, we just pray that we'd set our egos aside and our finances aside, Father, and, Father, we'd come together and do what the right thing is for our community. Father, be with each speaker tonight. Give them clarity of thought. Help them to speak clearly. Help them to express their points without anger. Father, we pray for our leaders here, Father, for their elected representatives. Father, we pray that you'd pour out a special blessing upon each one that's here tonight, Father, that is willing to give of themselves to make our community better. Father, we love you, we honor you, and we commit this entire meeting into your hands. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seen it? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
I'm here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
First of all, to this evening, we have a presentation of the Employee of the Month by Andre Anderson. Where, oh, where? Are you going to fill in for him?
Good evening, everyone. Nikisha Lyon with the Planning and Zoning Division. It is with the greatest honor that I have the opportunity to nominate LeAnn Walkter as Employee of the Month for August 2019. As a principal planner for the city, LeAnn is often tasked with many of the Planning and Zoning Division's highly technical development projects. One of these projects, Center Lake Ranch, is an approximately 2,000-acre mixed-use development encompassing a distinctive blend of residential, retail, office, and civic uses which offer a range of housing options, walkable neighborhoods, and a strong sense of place within the city of St. Cloud. This project alone involved a variety of different -- a variety of development and review processes which required frequent and high-level coordination between St. Cloud residents, city staff members and divisions, and the applicant. A project of this magnitude is one many planners may go their whole career and never have the opportunity to work on. It involves not only great skills in urban design and land use planning, but immense amounts of patience, effective communication, and proper leadership to ensure the best development product to enhance the quality of life for the community. LeAnn went above and beyond in her call of duty in her facilitation of this project through the city's development procedures. The countless hours put into this project over an almost two-year process shows the level of commitment she has to her community and as an employee for the city of St. Cloud. She worked effectively to foster public participation in the process, something many communities struggle with. Though contentious at times, LeAnn always made herself available to educate residents on the project or to provide information to other staff members when needed. Her leadership within this project is only one of the many examples of her incredible work ethic and the dedication she possesses. LeAnn strives every day to help our division to be the best it can be even in times of high stress. Her bubbly personality and spirit illuminates any room she is in. You can hear her laughter down the hallway and immediately feel a sense of joy. She often goes out of her way to buy sweet treats for her coworkers to make our day a little bit brighter. Her knowledge and skill set, as well as her courteous attitude, makes her a fundamental part of our division. Outside of her position with the city, LeAnn is an active member of the St. Cloud community from her involvement with her neighborhood's HOA to singing at local events. Thank you, LeAnn, for your service to the city of St. Cloud and for always being the best role model, mentor, and friend your coworkers could ask for.
Speech?
Thank you. I've been blessed with an amazing planning team, and we really do work collaboratively, and it's really an honor to be a part of such a wonderful team on the city. So, thank you.
Glad you could make it. I was working, actually. I'd like to present Councilmember Trace with this certificate completion of the Institute for Electoral Municipal Officials Training, and congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done and are doing already. Thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. As Mayor Blackwell said, I'm Brittany Cable. I'm part of the marketing team for the Osceola Reads Initiative, and I'm joined this evening by Carrie Avery, Executive Director of the Education Foundation of Osceola County. I believe the City of St. Cloud partnership on this initiative came about before some of the current council members were elected, so we wanted to give you an overview and an update of the Osceola Reads program tonight. As this is year four of the five-year agreement, we will be gathering outcomes over the course of the year to report on the success of the current initiative. Oh, sorry. There's our inter页. So, what is Osceola Reads? Osceola Reads is a five-year countywide literacy initiative created in 2016. The goal of the program is to increase the reading readiness rate here in Osceola County. Early literacy is very important for the future academic success of our community's children. The Osceola Reads program is benefiting the community through raising awareness of the importance of reading with our children before they enter the classroom, providing resources to our community through campaigns and face-to-face conversations with families at events, and particularly through promoting the use of the Footsteps to Brilliance app. Footsteps to Brilliance is a reading app that has 15 libraries of books in both English and Spanish, as well as interactive literacy games ranging from phonemic awareness and letter recognition songbooks and nursery rhymes, all the way to stories like Aesop's Fables and writing journals. The Footsteps to Brilliance app was purchased by the school district of Osceola County to be used in VPK through second-grade classrooms, as well as by all children who live in Osceola County who have not yet entered school. Usage and data for the Footsteps to Brilliance app is split into those two categories: children who are enrolled in the school district of Osceola County, VPK through second-grade classrooms, and those children who have not yet entered school, or who attend what we call a private provider, which is a preschool or a charter school in the county. We refer to this particular group collectively as community users, and that is the data that we will be sharing with you this evening, all of our community user data. In the first four years, the Osceola Reads team has registered 10,547 community-aged children in the Footsteps to Brilliance app. This chart references the overall usage of the children on the Footsteps to Brilliance app from December 2015 until now, in Osceola County as a whole, and then those users whose families self-selected St. Cloud as their city upon registration, or in a private provider that is located within St. Cloud. This chart references the overall usage of children who live in Osceola County who are not yet in a school district of Osceola County VPK program or higher. Of those children registered, 36% or 3,100 children make up what is classified as an active user, which are those children who use the program on a regular basis as labeled by Footsteps to Brilliance. Last year, in the 2017-2018 school year, we began our focus on usage on those children who are in that three-to-five-year-old range, as these are the children, the ages that we deem to be more developmentally appropriate for the app's usage. And as our goal is to increase the reading readiness rate here in Osceola County, focusing on those children who have not yet entered the classroom is critical. At this time, we currently have about 2,800 children registered who are within that three-to-five-year age range, and a total of 8,623 current registration as community users, because as the children move into the VPK or kindergarten classrooms within the district, they leave our numbers. This slide is similar to the last slide referencing the year-over-year comparison, but specifically on usage here in St. Cloud. Currently, 36% or 1,124 of all Osceola County active users are in the city of St. Cloud. This past school year, 35% of all Osceola County's usage came from those children and families that live here in St. Cloud. The Osceola Read team is working on connecting with more private providers in St. Cloud to add this free reading app as an additional resource to be used in their facilities and at home with their students' families. We've registered over eight schools here in the city of St. Cloud, including Building Brains Academy, Canoe Creek Charter, Discover School of St. Cloud, JJCC Bilingual Christian Academy, Preschool Connections Academy, St. Cloud Prep, St. Thomas Aquinas, and Teletubbies' Primetime for Learning. The Osceola Reads team also works to collaborate with local events that take place here in St. Cloud. We make it a point to be at each of the library's summer reading kickoffs and their back-to-school events, and this year, we joined the city's recent back-to-school bash at the Civic Center. We greatly appreciate your willingness to place the flashing signs encouraging those families to register and read with their children and to visit us at osceolareads.com. We saw over 60 submissions on the website for new registrations for those families who selected that they heard about the program from those flashing signs since June. Support from our community for this initiative is critical. So, how can people help increase the reading readiness rate here in Osceola County? We have started what we call the Sponsor a Station program, which creates partnerships with local businesses, organizations, and individuals to sponsor technology stations in areas of need throughout our community. Our sponsors include Pointyana Medical Center, St. Cloud Regional Medical Center, Commissioner Cheryl Grebe, the Early Learning Coalition of Osceola County, Commissioner Fred Hawkins, and the city of Kissimmee. These stations give families the opportunity to utilize the Footsteps to Brilliance app in public spaces where they may not regularly think to give their children reading options. This can then prompt them to use the app at home or when books aren't readily available for them. We currently have six tables throughout the community, with three more being placed over the next two weeks. The chart here references the currently active technology stations throughout the community and their usage. They are averaging about 47 hours of usage per month at each table. Over the next two weeks, we have three more stations being placed: one at Oak Street Community Center, another at Chambers Park, and then Commissioner Hawkins will replace Commissioner Grebe's station, which is currently located at Veterans Memorial Library, and she will be placing her station at the Meridia Community Center. Each station's sponsorship costs $1,900 and includes a two-person technology table with chairs, the branded design on the table, including the sponsoring organization, two iPads with Apple Care, a mobile device management software, and social media promotion for the partnership of any organization. So, if you or any organizations that you are a part of are interested in sponsoring a station or finding additional information on the program, you can learn more at osceolareads.com. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions at this time, and if I don't have the answer, I'll work to get it for you and bring it back.
We certainly thank you for all the amazing things and the huge difference that you're making in the hearts and lives of young people and families and the next generation. I know you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you.
Would anyone here like to speak? Councilmember Askew?
So, I heard that you had some sponsors out there, but I did not hear the city of St. Cloud. I heard Kissimmee and the county. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay. Is that something we can look down the road to budget for?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you need a consensus from the council?
Please.
Or something like that?
Do we have a consensus from the council that we investigate supporting?
Sure. Might be this year, might be next year, or something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Askew. Would that put a smile on your face?
Absolutely. Thank you all so much for your support of our initiative.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we come to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided by the presiding officer prior to as soon as practical thereafter the person addresses the council. We will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is she here? Hewett-Crumpler?
She's coming down the hallway.
She's coming down the hallway.
She's coming.
Ms. Crumpler, this is the citizens forum, and you have requested to speak, and so I'll give you that opportunity now.
Good evening. Hewett-Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I've been up here a lot of times. Many of the times, I have tried to encourage, cajole, beg this council to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of St. Cloud. Sometimes it happens pretty easily, and sometimes it's pretty rough. You know, your job, to me, is not a hard job, because you should be guided very simply by what's in the best interest of the citizens of St. Cloud, all the citizens, all the time. And when in doubt, if you just follow that simple question, I think most of the decisions are easy. Photo ops are great, and, you know, they're part of the job, they're necessary. And on some of the easy things, that's great, but on the hard things, when you get it wrong, I'll tell you, and when you get it right, in my opinion, I'll tell you. So, you had a workshop recently, and I was pretty pleased that you all went to such great detail to look at the water situation and to conclude that it's not in the St. Cloud's best interest to integrate with Toho. I agree with that. I think the thing that makes St. Cloud a city is control of our utilities, our water system, our electric system. Those are vitally important to us, and I applaud you for coming to that conclusion. I was also very pleased at the workshop that you brought up the idea of Hastings Farm and possibly, I guess, purchasing it for a pretty elaborate, wonderful park space. And I think the cost is something like $5.75 million, and it's unexpected, but it's a pretty -- I'd call it a treasure, okay, and for the city. And that's a tough decision, too, but I think you all are leaning in the right direction towards that and going to figure out a way to do it. I want to say that in 2016, four people here were -- well, not exactly, but there's four people up here that are supported by and are friends of Fred Hawkins: Ms. Matheny, Mr. Blackwell, Mr. Askew, and Mr. Trace. Mr. Cooper is pretty independent, and he has repeatedly voted against many of these large housing projects. What I think about housing, I think the right thing to do for the citizens is to get the traffic in place -- I mean, the roads in place, so we don't have uncontrollable traffic. I think the right thing to do is understand the cost for water, sewer, et cetera, and be transparent about it. And what I'm going to say is, you know, you guys, friends of Fred, are not friends of St. Cloud, in my opinion, many times, not every time, but many times. And, you know, I know Nathan, Fred goes to your church, and that's great, and you guys are friends, and you've told us that many times, and that's great. But I just want to say independence is what's needed up here: independent thought and independent decision-making. And what often happens is the four of you vote together, Chuck is off on his own, and I got to commend Chuck for bringing the Liche problem to us, and we'll talk about that later. But it's not easy to be the one man, odd man out, and you guys should just step back and do what's right for the citizens, and it should be very easy.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler. Has anyone else registered to speak to the citizens forum? If not, we come to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on consent agenda, now will be the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to pull Item B for discussion, and Item F, take that off the agenda.
So, you're going to remove Item F, and we're going to pull D for separate discussion?
B, Bravo.
Did you say B?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Just want to make a clarification.
Not D?
No, sir.
Just B?
Yes, sir.
B and F?
Yes, sir.
Anything else from the council?
One second.
Didn't see your light there. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I just have a general comment moving forward on the agenda items. Five or six of these agenda items, when you read the financial information, it says no financial impact, but that's not -- I think that's misleading. It's like maybe there's not a financial impact right now, but you're putting them in place for future expenditures, so I would like to have that clarified. I think that's just a little misleading when you read those.
Just clarify more detail, so it...
Well, I mean, like, you're putting contracts in place, and then when you read the financial, it says there's no financial impact. But there will be financial impact when you start to use the contract.
That's correct.
So, there's like at least six of them on here that had that same blanket statement, so I think it needs to say, and maybe on some of them, it needs to -- excuse me, it needs to say, like, no financial impact except staff time, because you're going to have staff time putting items together, but just clarify in the future that this is what it's going to be used for, and it'll come back for approval for authorization to spend, things like that, instead of no financial impact.
But there is no cost, right?
Unless there's a task authorization. Some of these contracts are put in place.
Objection from the council on that?
Yeah, just to clarify.
Got it. Understood.
All right.
And that was Item B, is that what I wanted to say? It actually says there's no cost. Item B is the booster pump jointly with Toho. The cost is up to $600,000. It's a 75-25 split. We're paying 450. Toho's paying 150. It is used for both our service area and the agreement area we have with Toho. We're having a pressure issue, fluctuation issue, and it's for fire protection, and I'm sure we have domestic water supply pressures up there.
Do you have any other information you want to add about that?
No, sir.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I had -- I don't remember which one it was, but it was about the $500,000 from the -- I'll pull that so I can just vote separate, because I'm not favored that, so.
For the seven-story...
Oh, that's actually in the council action.
I'm jumping ahead, excuse me.
Okay. Are there any other items of concern on the consent agenda? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda?
Are these the letters we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
The letters?
Okay. On the downtown revitalization project, that's just engineering services. That doesn't include the actual work on the project, is that correct?
That's right.
On Item Number E?
I believe that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And you have a number of items here on disaster recovery. Is there a reason we can't talk about those all together, or are there something unique about each one? I don't really understand what they are. And I have read it, but you've got one here on F that's talking about no cost for disaster recovery consulting. Are we already pay the consultant, or...
That's the one that's been removed.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I can't write. All right, so G, let's see. Land of my code. Well, emergency services, Number H, says no cost with this item. What exactly is that?
Mayor?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes. Ms. Crumpler, the contracts we -- for debris removal, if we have a hurricane or a wind event, those have to be in place for us to be able to submit for FEMA reimbursement. So, there is no cost to that contract, but we have to have that contract in place to be reimbursed by FEMA. There's no cost unless we have an emergency.
But there could be a cost then, a substantial one, correct?
That's correct, and that's why we have a consensus.
Why do we say no cost? Why can't we ballpark it? Why can't we say no cost if no event -- if there is an event, the upper limit would be whatever?
That's what you just talked about with the council.
I'm sorry, Ms. Matheny, but I'm trying to support that.
No, that -- no, I got it.
Okay.
We could do that. Again, we wouldn't know what that is, but we could put a placeholder in there.
We can estimate from the last one, it was 2017, no?
I don't want to -- we don't know what kind of category hurricane we have, so it'd be difficult to do.
Well, you make a good point. We don't, but we should try to have an idea for the public, in my view. Water treatment, now, water treatment's an ongoing issue. I kind of thought we had that solved, and I was pretty happy about that. But are we having continual issues with the residue problems, or is it solved?
That has been resolved.
Okay.
And we are in the final stages of finishing up utilizing U.S. water employees over the next month.
Oh, so we only need another month, and that's it?
That's what we're estimating.
Then we're on to St. Cloud people only?
That's correct.
Excellent. Okay. Our medical costs are -- I don't know, is that higher or lower than it's been in the past, or...
Mr. Mayor, can we -- we're on the consent agenda item, and can you just -- if you're going to address an item, I'd ask that if you tell us what item you're talking about.
J, sorry, J, Mr. Menzerris, J.
Thank you.
Florida Blue costs about half a billion dollars for medical insurance, and then there was another one on here for insurance. I don't know where that one is. That had to do with, I think, accidental death.
J is actually our stop-loss.
Stop-loss.
So, that's a secondary. You know what that is from your HR background.
Sure. Stop-loss is to mitigate the upper limit of what we have to pay out?
Correct.
Is that gone up a lot since last year?
About -- I don't want to say it wrong. I think it's about $60,000.
60, 60?
60.
Oh, 60, okay.
60K.
That's pretty much the same. The traffic signal management, it seems like it's being shifted from the county to St. Cloud. Is that correct? On number -- sorry, Mr. Menzerris, on Number...
L.
L, thank you.
It's actually going from Kissimmee to Osceola County.
Oh, to the county. So, they're going to take care of our traffic lights?
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't we do it?
We don't have the staff or the expertise to do it.
Okay.
Nor the equipment.
Nor the equipment.
Nor the equipment? Okay. The eight -- Number M, the eight school resource officers for $360,000, those are new officers that we have, or new resources?
No, ma'am. Those are the ones that were hired last year as part of the school safety program initiative from the state of Florida.
I do hope we have one at every school, do we?
That's correct.
Great.
Including charter schools.
Yeah, that's great, too.
I'm going to give you another minute.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Well, you got a lot of items here. Okay. The emergency debris on number T, is it the same issue as that we had before about moving stuff from a hurricane?
That's correct. That's from monitoring services. You have to have a person that monitors those coming in to make sure that we can account for the amount of debris, so FEMA doesn't get ripped off.
Again, we ought to try to have a cost on that, in my opinion. Okay. Is that an emergency? What is it?
Amber alert.
Amber alert, okay. Do we, do we need to talk about that? You want to tell us who it is? All right, I guess, you know, oh, I know what it is, here it is. On number Y, it looks like to me we're doing a grant application for the city of St. Cloud, which I totally applaud, and it's got a cost of up to $2 million. It seems like, aren't we applying for a grant for $2 million?
That's correct.
It's not going to cost us $2 million, right?
That's correct.
Well, that's one, one in the other direction, I guess. We should say there's no cost to us, or is there a cost?
There is no cost to us, other than if we're successful, we have to pay the consultant for writing the grant.
Okay, but it's certainly not $2 million bucks, right?
It's a $2 million grant, so we actually have to account for that in our budget line, so that's why it says a cost up to $2 million. We'd still have to add it to our budget before we could expend it.
Yeah, maybe a little footnote or something might help people understand that. Is that the same thing for number Z? Is that something different?
That's the, that actually is the engineer's estimate for that CDVG project, repair that pipe on Illinois Avenue.
Bill, I think that's X and Y, isn't it?
It says rebuild Florida infrastructure program, Department of Housing, Urban Development, Community Development Block grant, grant. Disaster recovery program for the purpose of replacing or lining aging warning metal drain infrastructure.
That's what the engineer's estimate cost is to repair that pipe.
And we're going to have to pay that?
No, that's a grant.
A grant, again, a grant, so it's really not our cost. That's good. Okay. I guess that's it for that. Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. You clarified a lot of items, thank you.
We have any other discussion?
Well, I think that she asked the question of why, and I think, I heard it, so I, at least I understand where, and you and I talked about it for a moment, and I think that's, it says cost, but it's not really cost, but could you put a little line there with it?
I can. I will do that. Again, the software has some limitations, but we'll make sure we annotate it either under my comments or finance, you'll have to see it in the staff report. We'll make sure it's clearly defined. It is going to be very difficult for me to tell you how much a debris contract's going to cost. I can go with historicals, but I don't know what that's going to actually cost us.
Yes, sir.
And that's why we maintain a contingency.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Matheny?
Can I finish?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No. Could we, you and I talked about it, could we put like same things together in this items? Because you flipped from one page to four pages, to back to page.
So if I could, Mr. Cooper and I spoke earlier, and like anything with disaster recovery, he would like to see that in the same area in the agenda so you don't have to flip all the way through. Again, the agenda software assigns an agenda number and it puts it in order like that, but we can look if we can rearrange and kind of group things so they're more logical.
I would appreciate that.
We'll have to get with the clerk and see what we can do.
And so we don't get a lot of stuff on the dais at the last minute, too. I'd jump that, pass that, but okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Yeah, I understand you're not going to be able to put a dollar amount, I just want to clarify instead of just that no cost.
I understand. I clearly understand, it'll be more detailed, so you'll have a clear, and the public will have a clear picture.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Most pleasure, the council regarding the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F.
Second?
Correct.
We have a motion from councilmember Matheny and a second from councilmember Cooper for the adoption of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That would be an aye. We're here.
All right.
We caught you.
Brings us to public hearings. Been asked to, do we want to deal with, does the council want to deal with the leachate issue, move it up on the agenda, deal with it first?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Can we just have a consent on that?
For, anyway.
Okay. Let's go to the final item under nine, under council action. Please, Madam Clerk, read that into the record, item number three.
Discussion of possible action on proposed settlement with Waste Connections of Osceola Inc., formerly known as Omni Waste of Osceola LLC regarding discharge of leachate from the JED Solid Waste Management Facility.
Mr. Sturgeon, do you have someone to speak to that?
Yes, I do. I just want to do a brief overview before we begin the discussion. If you remember, back in June 13, the council acted to prohibit Waste Connections from delivering leachate to our wastewater system. Subsequent to that act, the council, staff, myself, the city attorney, and our acting public services administrator met with Waste Connections and their attorney two separate occasions and regarding potential litigation, and we received a letter from them on the proposed settlement agreement. And I want to ask Mr. Menzeres to talk to the rest of it.
Well, I think you have, you have a copy of the, of the letter that we received that is offering a resolution. As you're, as you're aware, we wanted to make sure we presented you an offer to resolve the issue in short of having to get to a point where maybe we're in litigation on it. Obviously, this is a decision that staff can't make, this is a city council decision, so we brought it back to you so that you could review it and discuss it and give us some direction on how you, how you wish to proceed. One of the things that I did share with, I think I've shared with the council is, at the last meeting, we were asked, I was specifically asked to try to quantify the potential risk to the city from a financial perspective in the event that the city was deemed to have wrongfully prohibited the discharge of leachate into the city system under the agreement from 2009. We got some information from Waste Connections, which, and under their, from their numbers and what they're doing right now to discharge their leachate in a different location than in St. Cloud's system, it's costing them about $1,300, a little over $1,300 a day. So using that number and based on their, the information they've given us, we estimate that under the balance of the, of the agreement, which has about 10 years left on it, that cost, if that cost is accurate, that cost could be upwards of 300,000, over $300,000 a year. So when I was asked a question in the June meeting about whether we could quantify the cost to the city and invent the city was deemed to have wrongfully terminated the, or prohibited the discharge of leachate, we did not have that number. Based on that information, we do have that number, a similar number now that would show that in, if we were to go into litigation, that Waste Connections could argue that they have lost a value of $300,000 per year for the balance of the, of the leachate disposal agreement. So we felt compelled to bring it back for you, because that is a large number, obviously. That is a number that I think the city council has to be aware of, because that is a, that is a risk of a risky proposition. And when you look at the letter that was provided to you from Waste Connections attorney, there is a, a, an opportunity and an offer to resolve this matter, which is that, which would allow for them to continue to dispose of the discharge of leachate in the city system. However, and, but only has a financial component to it that is relatively small in comparison to the risk, the ultimate risk that we think that the city could be facing in the event that it did get into litigation and was deemed to have wrongfully prohibited the discharge of leachate. In other words, that $300,000 a year figure. So we won, we felt compelled to bring it back to you. As your city attorney, we are obligated to, so that you can make the decision about how you want to proceed with this. And that's why it's before you tonight. So we're up to answer any questions council might have on this. I know Bill and I participated in a couple discussions, Mr. Felbinger did too, so if there's any technical questions, I'm sure they're here to be able to answer it, but we wanted to bring it back to the council so the council could tell us how to respond to this offer that we've received.
And that would not include legal fees?
That would not include legal, the $300,000 plus figure does not include legal figures, fee.
Okay. Councilmember Askew?
Can I just get clarification? If it was the $300,000 a year, our contract was for 10 more years, wouldn't they go after the whole 10 years, which would probably be $3 or $4 million?
Right, and then, and that's what I was suggesting to you. See, when, when, and this is by no, I'm not, please get, I'm not talking about the merits of a successful litigation on one side or the other on this. We were asked the question at the last meeting, what is the exposure of the city in the event that is deemed to have the city acted wrong? And that's what this is. And so we just did it on an annualized basis. It's over $300,000 if you take the $1,340 figure and figure it out, but, so yes, Mr. Askew, it could, the exposure could be the about $300,000 a year for the balance of the, of the contract, which would be close to $3 million, over $3 million.
Is, and can we clarify what they're actually asking for? I know that there was, there were some numbers in there that, $25,000 attorney fees, some other things that...
Well, what, as, as the August 2 letter, which I think you all have a copy from, basically operates off of the analysis that they provided us, that it's costing them an average of $1,347 per day to deliver the leachate they are receiving from the JED facility to another facility and discharge it. So their, their damage, their, that portion of their, of the value they're talking about is the $1,347 per day since the date it was prohibited, which I think was June 17. They did include, because the contract does have a provision in it that, address, that gives the prevailing party in any litigation the right to recover attorney's fees, so they did add an element on to that of their attorney fees to date. I've had preliminary discussions, we did have some discussions when we first received it with council for Waste Connections, and that is a secondary issue about it that is, that is probably negotiable, but that $1,347 is the, per day since the date that we prohibited is the, is the basis for their claim.
And I guess the second part to this, if we head down this path, does our insurance for the city cover any of this?
Likely not. This is a, this is a, it would arguably be a breach of contract claim, and the city's insurance carrier does not cover breach of contract claims.
I don't know if you can discuss this, but what type of legs do we, can we stand on during this?
It's very difficult for me to say, Mr. Askew. I know that's the answer that everybody wants, wants to get a, you know, a good answer to it. The, the, the agreement, you've all seen the agreement that we have, the, that was entered into in 2009. It has some language in there that allows the city to, to prohibit the discharge of leachate when, and the language is, "In the reasonable opinion of the city, the discharge poses an imminent threat to the operation regulatory compliance or effluent quality and suitability for public use of the wastewater treatment plant." So in a litigation sense, without trying to, you know, to make it as simple as I can, in a litigation sense, the argument would be about whether the city, the city acted with a reasonable opinion and did it, was there an imminent threat to the operation regulatory compliance or effluent quality and suitability for the, for the plant. That would be the ultimate issue, that would be decided by a trier fact. And that would come down to, like anything else, it would come down to experts and data and, and, and support for the action that the city, that the city council took.
Do we have any, if it's okay, Mayor? Do we have any testing on our part that we can see a change? Is there anything that, that's, I guess, the part I'm looking at, as the city, what can we do to protect our citizens? And do we, do we have any testing or anything that we can come in front of this? And this is a scary thing. It's, it reminds me of like Godzilla and the Blob, you know, you're basically fighting that.
It came to get you.
Well, there's, Mr. Askew, there are, there are two components that, we did, we, since June 13, and one of the reasons why city staff put this on the agenda, first of all, we are obligated to bring back an offer to you from any party when there's a proposed conflict. We are not obligated to give you an offer that we think is unreasonable or irrational, so, so the fact that we, that staff and Mr. Sturgeon and I were, after we met with him, were agreeable about moving this forward was because we didn't, we didn't think their agreement was unreasonable. We felt, I mean, I'm sorry, their offer was unreasonable. And you couple that piece with some other factors that I understand have come up since June 13. Number one, part of the issue that brought this up was the fact that the JED facility had, had obtained permission from the county, Waste Connection had obtained permission from the county to accept materials, coal ash specifically, from outside the state of Florida, and the county had approved that. And that was being brought into the JED facility. It's our understanding, and I think we've all confirmed, that that coal ash from outside the state of Florida, specifically from Puerto Rico, is no longer being put in the JED facility, and that has changed since June 13. The other piece of information, and I'm, I'm not the technical person, I'm the lawyer, the other piece of information we received is that the county did do some, have their consultant, who I believe is Jones Edman, do a, do a study on the facility and, on the JED facility, and it was, and that study came back and said it met the qual, the standards for the operation of that facility. So we had those two pieces of information, which you did not have on June 13, and that is sort of, and that has changed, that has changed a little bit. We do not, I'm not aware of it, and again, city staff can correct me if I'm wrong, we are not aware of any, we do not have any information from any experts or any professionals that would show that the leachate material that is being delivered to the city's system is not meeting the quality standards set by, you know, set by the professional standard organizations. So we don't have any of that information.
So this is really being driven by whatever rules were made up for the federal government or DEP or whatever, and we're sort of trying to abide by those rules, but we don't have any testing either to say one way or another?
Well, we, I mean, it's, I don't know, Mr. Felbinger or Mr. Wheeler, maybe they can talk a little bit more about the professional standards, because I'm certainly, certainly that's way above my pay grade.
Maybe you could also talk about, you know, this process of how the leachate is received, how we treat it, and how we, what we test it also before we release it.
Well, the, the leachate is delivered to the transfer station and then is gradually bled into the sewage collection system, go to the plant, that's Monday through, Monday through Friday. And right now typically is about 10,000 gallons a day. The leachate then goes to the treatment process. We are obligated, under the DEP permit, to treat, to test the reclaimed water to ensure that it meets the state standards. One of those state requirements is that we treat, we test the reclaimed water to make sure it meets the primary drinking water standards. So in other words, the quality of the effluent that comes out that's used for reclaimed water has to meet the federal primary drinking water standards. Because you now have a injection well, we typically, we used to have to do that once every two years. Under the permit for the injection well, we now do that quarterly, so we do routine samples. And there are no test results from the treatment plant that indicate that the reclaimed water doesn't meet primary drinking water standards at this present time.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Could you stand back up another? So you're telling me that this water goes through the effluent and comes out and we're spraying the fields and stuff like that, and your yard, and the kids are out there playing and they get the water and they jump in it and all that, and they drink it because they don't know any different? Would you drink out of, out of it for a year or two or three years constantly? I mean, I'm just asking, stop a minute, let me finish. Would you, would you drink it for constantly, no problem?
Of course not, it's not, it's not, it's not potable water. It's not, it's not, it's not potable water.
Okay.
But no, no reclaimed water is potable water.
But you think it's clean enough that the kids playing in it and stuff like that, they wouldn't get harmful, no problems down the road, or?
That's, that's, that's the, that's why the requirements that have been set by DEP and EPA require that the, that the water meet the drinking water standards when it comes out and the levels they set at, because, and that's the reason we're required to notify the public that it is non, that it is not potable water. It's why you have the color coatings, it's why you have the signage, the stuff that goes out, is to tell the public that it's not potable water.
But there's a lot more testing that could be done, a whole lot more entailed than, how many, how many tests are we doing?
As I said, we do, we do the quarterly samples.
How many, I mean, for different?
There's 90, there's 90 compounds within the primary drinking water standards.
And you're checking all 90 of them?
Yeah, that's right.
Is there anything past that, beyond that, that could be harmful in there, that could be in that leachate, that we should be checking?
I...
You don't know?
Well, no, and I would say this, because I've, from my 40-some years of doing this, in any landfill leachate, and I'm talking about any landfill leachate that's a municipal landfill, there's going to be compounds in there that are beyond what you would normally test for, for primary drinking water standards. Any landfill, the things that are in that landfill, absent the coal ash, are chemical compounds that are much more hazardous than what's you have within the coal ash.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from council?
I do have another one.
You have another question? Go ahead, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. I thought you had somebody else, other lights?
Yeah, I don't see a light.
Not a problem. Thank you. It seems to me, I would like to see if we could do an environmental attorney, have the city hire somebody that would be looking for our best interest, both sides, fair equality that's going to be right for us. I don't want to be unfair to JED, and I'm, I'm not for you, but at the same time, I don't think, I don't think there's enough, that we've checked as far as this environmental studies for us. And I'd also like to have somebody to do a, the leachate, I'd like to have that checked through the city, not from the county, not from JED's landfill. I don't want them to give us something, I want it to be from the city. Us to go and hire somebody ourselves. And the leachate, as far as the soil, I'd like the ponds, anything that comes in, out of that water, out of the drinkage water that we're drinking right now, I'd like to check, anything that we can check beyond this potable water and non-potable water. Let's check it all and make sure that we're not getting these things that are not, not good for our kids and ourselves to drink. So that's where I'm coming from, and that's where I'm going to, I'm going to end up making a motion that we try to do this and see if we get a little bit of time, breathing time, that we don't get shoved this thing down our throat. Don't mean, JED won't mean that, but give us a little bit of time so that we can get our tests, get our facts where we know 100% from the city, go out and find out the best people, the minds that we can get, and bring it back here to us at another meeting, and then we'll know where we're at. And you people that are here from the coal ash, you can be here there and hear the same thing, and we'll know where we're at from. That's where I'm, I just want to be fair. Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I'm going to echo some of Mr. Cooper's sentiments. You know, I have the agreement from 2009, which predates any of us being on council. But it says, "The city may at any time further restrict, reduce, or prohibit discharge completely as a result of any considerations that affect the primary purpose and objective of the city's wastewater treatment plant, including but not limited to operational concerns, permit compliance, effluent quality issues, or concerns from the wastewater treatment plant, creation of a nuisance or objectionable odors at the facility, or failure to properly maintain the facility." So I have concerns. I think that all the people here have concerns. So I feel like personally that we're being bullied, given a scare tactic.
Absolutely.
And, and to go and hire all the experts that we need to go through all these machinations of testing is going to far exceed, I mean, the little bit of money that we get from this contract. I just don't understand why we're going to go through this exercise. I feel like it says that we can cancel the contract, we've canceled the contract. I know they're coming back with this scare tactic number, but the concern for the citizens of the city of St. Cloud outweighs my concern for, for getting sued. I think we should move forward.
But what are the conditions for counseling? The contract, we can't just cancel it. They have to be given opportunity to produce tests that depend on EPA and DEP guidelines that will never change. Any lawsuit that we face or anything that goes to court is going to be revolved around EPA, DEP guidelines. And why should we be doing the testing? You know, the waste company ought to be doing the testing.
I don't trust them.
But we can't. They don't do, an outside source has to do it, they don't do their own testing.
Oh, no.
No.
But what are the conditions of, of the contract?
No way.
Well, well, the language that we've been talking about, and specifically the language that Councilwoman Matheny just read, has, is applicable and is in the contract. However, the issue, respectfully, and I've been city attorney for 20 years, and I tell you that I only have the best interests of the city of St. Cloud in mind when I tell you this. But the process that the council went through is, in making, getting to the point where we are today, was inconsistent with the contract, if, with the contract, the way it was entered into, not by anybody on this agenda, on this board, but by a prior council, which you have to live up to, was inconsistent with, with the process which we're talking about right now. In other words, respectfully, Ms. Matheny, the language you just read has a provision in it that says you cannot do any of that unless you give them an opportunity to explain, to change that. That's what the contract says. The city council did, did not address that point, because that wasn't the action the city council took when, on June 13th. The action that the city council took on June 13th was based on the imminent threat to the system, which is the second part of that, of that paragraph, and that gave you the opportunity, in our view, to consider prohibiting the discharge of leachate. And, and that's this issue that, that was just, that's the way the decision was made on June 13th, because that's the way, the only way you could have. Had you done the testing beforehand and been in the situation that you could have, then you would have been in a much better position, in our mind, to, to litigate this matter down the road. And I, I understand the emotion involved in this issue, I understand it, but it's our role, obviously, to address the exposure to the city as a whole when it comes to matters like this and potential breach of the contract.
My concern, if we, if we were in the contract or either renewed, is there some way that we can have a caveat that our continued participation in receiving leachate will depend, could be canceled in the future if tests come back to prove, where we have scientific evidence, not just emotion?
Well, regardless, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may, regardless of what you decide tonight, and if you decide at some point to allow the agreement to continue, the city always has the right at any time to do any testing the city wants to do, wants to pay for and deal with it, and then to address any of these issues. The city also has a right under the contract to require the waste connections, to do additional testing at any time it wants, so that we can require them to do testing and you, there isn't, it's our system. We control what gets, we, we address what gets them. So we don't have to have special permission to test the materials that's being put into the system. We can hire anybody we want at any time to do that, and at any time. And even if you were to today decide you wanted to resolve the current, the current pending matter with waste connections, it doesn't mean next week you couldn't have someone come out there and do the study report and find out that there's a problem with it, and then be, at least have the empirical data to basically support the prohibition of the leachate discharge into the system.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. It appears to me, Anzares, Dan, that this contract, I understand what, what, looked over quickly again, coming from Puerto Rico was never 10 years ago, never was envisioned that, that was going to come out of the, out of the state of Florida. We figured that anything that was coming from JED to St. Cloud into, into our own leachate place, that we were going to clean it and wrinkle, put it in, into, into the ponds itself. It seems like to me, back in, that by doing that, it's, it's just not, it's not a wise thing to, it's, how do I say this? It's because it came out of, not of the state of Florida, and it came, you know, in Puerto Rico, we don't know what kind of carcinogenics in there. I can tell you from what I've talked to different individuals that have run these concrete plants, and they have told me that if you run different leachate, different coal ash portion of it, and they put it in the concrete, and that mixes it up, and that makes it nice and smooth, and it works good. But you can buy that leachate here in Florida, that's fine. But you go and buy it up there in Pennsylvania, it's sour. I mean, it'll absolutely, if you put a little bit of water in it, it's going to kill you. There's some bad leachate there. And we do not know what came from Puerto Rico. Now, we've been told from the county or from JED, but that's not from us. Until you tell me, show me, I'm one of these people, show me myself, then I know it's right. That's where I'm coming from. The last thing, the last thing, it looks like to me, what I heard, the county commissioners, they walked this thing on the, on the dais at the last minute, and you all saw that, and everybody was upset, and I am too. And it seems like the, the citizens back there, in the county or the city of St. Cloud, we, we're, we're the county commissioners too, we, we belong to them, we, we're right here in the, in the county, city too. We didn't get a chance to go and speak and give a complaint or good yes or no, they didn't tell us anything about it. So I think that I had to ask you, and that was a question a couple of days ago, was maybe we ought to turn the tables. Maybe the city of St. Cloud ought to consider a lawsuit against county commissioners.
Yes.
That's where I'm at. And that's my question.
I'm sorry, your question is?
Can we put a lawsuit against the county commissioner?
I certainly can look further into it.
The county, I ask you, and you look for a day or two?
We've looked into it. When you and I talked about this on Tuesday, we've looked, we looked into it. I have been, I have not, in my mind, and have not found, in my office's mind, have not found the cause of action that the city could maintain against the county related to the action that the county took. What I understood happened was the county amended its approval for operation of the JED facility without any notice, under a contract it had, to allow for material from outside the state of Florida to be put in the JED facility. That was the action that was taken without any notice. Shouldn't have been, should they have given notice? Obviously, they should have. Were they legally obligated to give, give notice to the city of St. Cloud? I'm not, I don't think they were, because we're not part of that contract to see that. So there's, there's, there, so we haven't found yet the cause of, we'll continue to look if that's a direction of the city council to try to do that. And again, that piece of it had to do with the delivery of materials from outside the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
Which is, which we understand is stopped.
Okay. And, and the other, and the other question, and the other question, I would like to see getting an environmental attorney that can look at this portion of it, even including of a lawsuit back. Let's look even at that. If there is possibility that we have been harmed by the county, have pushed this through us, we didn't know it, as a matter of fact, most of the council members didn't find out about two, three months ago. As a matter of fact, I was probably one of the first ones that said, "We've got a problem here." But all of a sudden, the bandwagon showed up here, you all, and we appreciate that. But at the same time, I think we need to get some kind of attorney that is a specialized. I understand you do stuff for us, and you do good, so, and I'd ask you if I didn't step on your tiptoes.
No, you're not.
And you told me the same thing, and I appreciate that. So I'm going to make a motion to do that again tonight, that we could get somebody to hire that attorney too, also. So that's two or three things, what I was asking, and I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Askew.
Mr. Sturgeon, is it okay if I bring Mr. Wheeler back up?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Brian, throwing you in the hot seat. I guess part of it, what I'm hearing really from everybody is that the testing part, I guess with your expertise, and I appreciate everything you're doing for us, not only with our water and guiding us through some of this, it, it sounds like it might be a staffing issue, it sounds like we might need more testing on our leachate. We, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but we, our landfill goes into the same pot as everything else over in, to get service. Do we test any of that? And can we test that? How would we go about that so we can actually start getting some data, not just quarterly, but maybe data weekly?
You can do that. I mean, we're doing testing, I guess I told you, on the, the effluent that comes out of the plant that goes into the injection well. That's required under permit. You can do the same testing on what's coming, the raw that's coming in. You can do, you can test for the same, the same thing. We do it through contract lab, because many of the, most of the stuff that you're required to test for are beyond the capability of the lab we have here at the wastewater plant. But they can test for all those things, and you can just want those, you can take a before and after sample, and you can do it for both. The leachate that's coming out of your closed landfill, you can do it, the leachate that you're getting from the JED landfill, and you can test, as we do right now, the effluent coming from the wastewater plant.
Can we create our own lab? Can we have our own staff to do that?
You really, it's really...
Don't want to go there?
No one go there. The equipment you need for that is highly expensive, and unless, unless you're using it every day a lot, it doesn't make, doesn't make sense.
Trying to get all the questions answered, but if we ended up doing more of this testing, I would assume that there's a cost to it, I'd be willing to pay that, because I really want to know what's, and what I'm drinking, what my kids are drinking, so.
Councilmember Trace.
Just to add to this, and, and just more or less to elaborate on kind of the path we're getting, going down, I just think we just need to make a, a policy decision of, do we accept any leachate into our wastewater treatment plant, either our own or, or from any other landfills? You know, if, if we think it makes, it has an impact on our reclaimed water, then we should just not, not have any leachate come through the system, and it should just be raw water coming through.
Well, my, my issue is we're still going, we're still liable for violating, for breaking our contract when we should have gone the direction that you're talking about, got our testing up front, had our evidence in hand. You have violated, you know, you, you, you sent us damaged materials, and then we're not in this lawsuit situation that we're in, where, that could bankrupt the city. But I agree that doing what you're talking about would give us evidence, you know, what are we receiving, and then what do we need to do about it if it's, if it's hazardous at this point? But right now, we, we don't have that evidence. We're making decisions without facts, and that's, just puts us in a very, it's put us in a bad place financially.
Yes, sir. Trace, I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, I want to go and get all the para, the, the data, and then we can set our hand on it and look at it, feel it, touch it, and if it's right, it's right, and then we, we can go and shut it off. But if you jump ahead right what you're wanting to do now, I don't know that that's, maybe you're doing double cut.
My worry is that, that the constituents that we're not testing for, that aren't really a part of the test, could be an issue as well.
Tell me that again?
If, if there are items that, either heavy metals or anything, that isn't a part of the standard test for reclaimed drinking, or reclaimed water, then we wouldn't have a test, we wouldn't be testing for it.
I'd want to, I'd want to know almost every test we could get through there, that was what I was asking for. I'd like to do that, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I'm not an attorney. But again, I read this contract, and I think that there's more teeth in it than, than we're talking about. I mean, it says, "Unless such concerns, in the reasonable opinion of the city, pose an imminent threat." It says a reasonable opinion. So what's a reasonable opinion? You know, I, I think there are some teeth in the contract that we have to cancel this. I mean, I'm going to make a motion that we hire environmental attorneys to fight this, and hire the consultants to provide the data to back up the lawsuit.
I'll second it.
Happy testing.
Thank you.
Help me clarify this, so that you're moving to do what?
For us to hire environmental law attorneys, the ones who specialize in this, these kind of matters, and hire whatever experts we need to provide the data. I mean, I'm not an expert in this, I don't know... I mean, I'm not an expert in this, I don't know that we have experts in this on staff. I mean, let's go out and get the experts.
Friendly amendment.
Yeah, you can give a friendly amendment.
See, if we could add something to, and, somebody can help us. Try and define somebody that comes out and will check this leachate before what, what it came into our, our tanks. You're going to have to go to Lakeland, I'm sure, to find out now because we, we don't have it readily available right here. So we're going to have to find it somewhere. So hopefully, if JED's going to let us to do this, if they don't, we're going to have a problem. But hopefully, we can get this, somebody, I'd like to have somebody come here and sit down and tell us that they are environmentalist, that does soil, soil sample, he'll do all of the, all the liquid water, and all of the different, uh, barn, whatever, the 28, 30, 100 different things that they need to do. I want to get it, come down here and tell us personally. I want somebody to show up, just like the, this, an attorney. So if we can do, have both of them, I would appreciate the, put that in there.
I think I had that.
Okay, put them both. We want to get, we want...
The environmental experts.
Both of them.
To be, and the attorney. So I think we got it covered.
Both covered.
And just point of clarification on that, I take it you are wanting in the motion that you're rejecting the proposed settlement?
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, just one more second.
We don't have a timeframe set on that, would you, do we need?
Councilmember Raskin.
We don't need to do that, we've got to get it, find out.
So, I'm all about clean water, everybody knows that. If we go down this path and we found out nothing's wrong, um, it just, I just, I really want to make sure that we're heading down the right path. I don't even mind doing any of this. It's, do we know that there's a challenge? Do we know that there's been testing done, that everything that we're, I think we're all scared.
I think I've got...
I mean, that's obvious.
You've got one or two that want to get up and stand and talk to you.
So when we, um, you know, doing this testing, and it could be pretty quick, I would assume, Mr. Wheeler could probably give me some advice on it.
No.
But at least we have something to stand on. This is what our standard is, this is what we're at, or this is what we had a quarter last year, this is what we're testing now. I mean, at least you have something. And right now, it doesn't seem like we have any true facts, true data in front of me. Again, where I think we're all scared, I think that, uh, we want clean water and we don't want any of this in our water or our reclaimed water. So how do you do that? That's the question, it's my, guess we're trying to figure out.
This time I'll receive any comment from the public, would anyone in, I've got a number of, Lorette Thatcher? I'd like to ask this, since there's so many, please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Lorette Thatcher, 9435 Atlanta Drive, uh, 347, St. Cloud, 34773. Good evening. I read some of the terms that the landfill wants you to agree to. Being bullied by a billion-dollar conglomerate, isn't that special? If I have learned one thing in my 66 years, it is that human engineering has great potential to fail. Kissimmee River straightening, Hurricane Katrina, Katrina Levy breach in New Orleans, Hurricane Rita in Houston, Sandy in New Jersey and New York, which resulted in flooding where development took place on filled wetlands, to name a few. Things are fine with the status quo until they aren't. The landfill is young by technological standards. The technology of leachate treatment is young. They don't really know the long-term effects will be because there's no historic reference. The dangers of coal ash exposure and spills have only become apparent in recent years as shown in Puerto Rico, Tennessee, and North Carolina. I worked in the World Trade Center, having left at 7:00 AM 9/11 from my overnight shift. There was asbestos in the building and it was deemed safe and non-hazardous, until the buildings came down and then it wasn't. Humans come up with some pretty interesting technology to problem solve. History is showing that when they are wrong, and that seems to happen quite a bit, the cleanup is costly and adverse health effects devastating. Will the leachate cause a problem in my lifetime, your lifetimes? Probably not. But what does it say to future generations if we as a society don't stand up to the bullies? And our children and grandchildren get stuck with the troubles. The county chose revenue over common sense to get everyone involved in this mess. Please don't follow their lead. They're trying to blackmail you. Agreeing to extra years on the contract, they're trying to blackmail you. Don't let them do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Deborah Gingrich, 6730 Owens Road, St. Cloud, 34773. Good evening. I'm here to encourage you to please do not accept the leachant water from the coal ash at the JED landfill that is full of heavy metals, arsenic, and et cetera. How could you in good mind let your children play in the yard after, or even during the time your yard sprinklers are going off? Filling your pools with the toxic water to let you and your children play in it? It's not a good idea. Not only you, your children, their children, but their children and on down the line will be affected. Heavy metals don't go away. Please do not accept this toxic waste. Do not put it in your water system. And please do not be bullied by JED. Thank you.
Jamie Wells.
My name is Jamie Wells, 9040 Mercury Drive, St. Cloud, Florida, 34773. I heard a num, a lot of numbers thrown around over here about a contract, but you didn't put a value on life. What do you estimate the value of life is? How much would you pay not to die from something like this? Is there a number? My opinion stated here today is just that, these are my opinions. On April 1st, 2019, a decision was made with no scrutiny, inquiry, nor fact-finding of the backdoor deal that was rushed through by the county attorney, Don Fisher, and possibly one of the Osceola County Commissioners. No public input was given, nor was offered to the citizens who ultimately have to deal with and pay the price for the poor decisions made by the now egotistical and self-absorbed Osceola County Commissioners. That backdoor rush deal had many components to it that should have been questioned, and anyone who would be affected by it should have been a part of the process at the minimum, like this board. Prior to any passing vote, the Osceola County Commissioners and the JED landfill put this board in a position that it is unjustified and uncalled-for. But because of the expedited way that the deal was pushed through without thought or due diligence, this board had to make a decision with the citizens in mind. You didn't vote to terminate the contract because you are friends with somebody on the board, nor did you vote to terminate the contract because you are Republican or Democrat. This board voted to terminate this contract because in your heart, you know that even if there was a 1%, 1% chance of the citizens becoming ill because of the toxic leachate coming from, coming to St. Cloud, that it would be unacceptable. Cancer doesn't stop at your door and turn around and go elsewhere because you're a mom or dad, brother or sister, tall or short, male or female. Cancer has no boundaries. Don't let the bully known as the JED landfill force you to do something that in your heart you know is wrong. Each one of you are stronger than that. You have the opportunity today to put a stop to big businesses pushing people around, pushing small cities around. Each one of you have the people's lives in your hands, but you must do what is in your hearts. Don't let the bully named JED landfill force you to announce publicly that the leachate is safe. Leachate contains the heavy metals that are in coal ash, and now that a few hundred thousand tons have been hastily dumped in a few months' time at the JED landfill, there'll be more and more toxic metals in the leachate for a long time to come. I ask that each one of you stand by your prior decisions when you terminated the contract with the JED landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Michaela Wells.
Michaela Wells, 9040 Mercury Drive, St. Cloud, Holopah. I was going to, again, speech prepared, but I'm going to change it up. So regarding giving the, put it on, okay. Regarding giving the landfill time to, to provide us or you guys with any proof, the hundreds of thousands of pounds of coal ash didn't come here until April. In June, we were still somewhat in the dry season. So if you guys would have said, "Hey, give us something," they would have given you, if anything, a test that might have been, you know, six months old or something. You cannot compare it to something that didn't exist prior to April. Plus, the leachate gets worse and worse with everything that is put in that landfill. And in June, we still didn't have the amount of coal ash in there that we have now. It didn't rain as much, the more wet it gets, the longer it sits in water, the worse the leachate gets. So back then, it wasn't an option to ask them for any proof. Plus, if you guys would have not stopped it and asked for testing, testing takes weeks, if not months, to get everything done, hire a company, hire an attorney, whatever. In the meantime, they would have kept bringing that stuff here just to find out two, three months down the road that it is hazardous or toxic. So I think you did the right decision and based on what Ms. Matheny said regarding the contract, I think you were in the right to do so. Regarding the cost that they claim that it take, cost them to ship the stuff to Tampa, I mean, there's a cost to ship it here. I mean, in the end, they're just on the road, two hours compared to 20 minutes, they still have to pump it, they still have to hire the trucks. So, I mean, it's not like it's free to bring it here. So I think, um, you know, they're overstating the numbers a little bit.
Add it to the books.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Then again, with testing the issues, the, the leachate and testing everything, I agree, I think it's a good idea to hire your own experts and attorneys. I just wanted to point out that this cannot be a one-time thing in case, you know, it's ever accepted back into the city, which I strongly am against. But this would be a constant cost, a constant testing, and it's not something where the truck stays in the driveway, you take a sample, you can test it, and 10 minutes later, you can tell them they're good to go. I mean, you would have to stop it, test it, and figure out if it's something you can take in or not. So I don't know how this would even work, but yes, go ahead and do your testing. Also, I wanted to say that, like others stated, we cannot cave the JED landfill. The landfill should not have opened in the first place, it was denied several times, expert said it's the wrong place to put it in, they sued, and the county caved. And that's the same approach they're taking now, it cannot happen. And there are several other treatment places that rejected the lead fill. They had a reason to do so, you have a reason, and we got to get the research done and the experts in place to prove that this is something we cannot accept in our county.
Thank you. Cassandra Wells. Say your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Wells and I live at 9040 Mercury Drive, Holopah. Would you rather save lives or spend millions? If you pick save lives, you got it right. If you spend money, you can always earn more, but when lives are lost, you will never get them back. My life, my moms, my dads, and everyone in this room depend on you making the right decision. Leachate can be dangerous, even if you try to clean it up. And it can seep into our water supply and contaminate it, and it can hurt our environment. We need your help. Please make the right choice and protect us. You're the only ones who can make the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ariel Hartney.
My name is Ariel Hartney, I live at 199 East Cedarwood Circle in Kissimmee. The citizens of St. Cloud deserve to hear the truth about the potential risks posed by leachate from a mixed solid waste landfill, especially one that recently accepted close to 650 million pounds of coal ash. It would be misleading to claim that coal ash is non-toxic and non-hazardous because it does indeed pose a threat to public health if not properly managed. This is evident when you look at the history of coal ash spills in this country, such as the Tennessee Valley Authority incident in 2008, where 30 people have already died since then, that were in the cleanup crew and didn't wear proper protective equipment. In addition to coal ash, the JED landfill accepted dioxin-contaminated material for several years before realizing their error, reporting it to DEP in April of 2012. They also recently agreed to accept jet fuel contaminated soil from OIA in the Norwegian Air flight. How many other potential errors might have occurred during the years that the landfill has been in operation? We don't know for certain, and there's a lot we don't know. And due to the TCLP test used to determine toxicity, there is still, there is a lot that has been hidden and will continue to be hidden from public view. Despite improvements in scientific understanding over the last decade, and despite recognition by EPA that there are limitations of single-point pH tests such as TCLP because they represent only one set of field conditions, TCLP is still the required test to determine toxicity of solid waste. In an effort to address concerns associated with single-point pH tests, EPA-funded research led to a comprehensive approach for testing leaching behavior of solid material called the Leaching Environmental Assessment Framework, or LEAF, that has since been added to the EPA's SW846 methodologies. LEAF tests were developed to assess leaching behavior for a wide variety of solid materials, including processed waste, construction materials, and mining wastes, or CCRs, coal ash. Evaluation of LEAF by the Electric Power Research Institute and other research institutions indicated that LEAF provides much more information compared to TCLP. This is because LEAF can be used to replicate a variety of field conditions impacting the leaching behavior of a solid material, such as variation in pH level or changing liquid-to-solid ratios over time. In an effort to assuage concerns of the community, we request the following analyses be performed on coal ash. Full list TC, of total metals by 6010, radioactive isotope testing, which is RA226, 228, thorium, uranium, lead 210. Full list of low-level PAHs by SIM method, which is EPA method 8270E, and then 2378 TCDD testing by EPA method 8290A. Also, can I have one more minute?
I'll give you 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Extraction by LEAF methods 1313 and 1314, and after those are performed, full list metals and radioactive testing. Modeling actual coal ash leaching behavior under mixed solid waste landfill conditions is crucial to show that the city of St. Cloud has attempted to identify hazards as they exist at the local level, even if it is not legally required to do so, and is just as concerned with the health and well-being of the citizens of this city as we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Lindsay Delano, is that correct?
My name is Lindsay Delano and it's 9040 Mercury Drive. First and foremost, we all wanted to sincerely thank you, the city council, especially Councilman Cooper, for erring on the side of caution, refusing to treat or accept any of the leachate from JED landfill. Y'all will never know how much that bold decision meant to all of us, especially to those of us who were born and raised here in the cloud. Having said that, we as residents continue to be enslaved, bullied, and at the mercy of both local officials and most recently, waste connections, as we agonizingly watch St. Cloud's small-town charm, languish, and St. Cloud's future mortgaged for a measly $2 a ton. However, the historic and clear-sided decision you all made to protect your own residents from leachate from the JED landfill was a monumental step towards salvaging the virtually extinct feeling of being St. Cloud proud. Growing up, I never would have dreamed of despising this place, which is a mild word to describe the feeling and disappointment I felt about our town here recently. My grandmother, God rest her soul, was the bookkeeper at St. Cloud High School for over 30 years. 30 years, and is the namesake for the football ticket booth. My family bled maroon and gold. Unfortunately, the city has been placed in this horrible position by our local officials, who should've stood up, just as you guys did. All you had to do is a quick Google search of Osceola County coal ash or the city of St. Cloud leachate, and the results would reveal the difference in the headlines you would be associated with. It's no secret that $4 million risk in litigation would be chump change in comparison, future lawsuits. We're asking all of you to please keep making us proud of living here, unlike the Osceola County Commissioners, who are the reason we are all in this position to begin with. We are in this in the long haul, and we stand with you 110% if you make the brave decision to continue standing your ground, because you stood up for us when the county sold us out. We refuse to be bullied, intimidated, or swayed, and I hope you refuse as well. It's been a long time since I've been able to say that I am proud to live here, to be from here, and I am now, thanks to you guys. Nobody wants to celebrate a town known for landfills and leachate. We want to continue celebrating small-town life. We all want to be a community that unites together as the so-called underdogs in a joint effort to protect our health, the environment, and a town that can be enjoyed for generations to come. Please continue to make St. Cloud proud and go down in the history books with us together as hometown heroes who refuse to be bullied. Our grandchildren and future generations will thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hughett Crumpler.
My phone number is 407-906-8826. Anybody who wants to talk to me about this or any other issue is welcome to call. You know, we have five county commissioners. One of those county commissioners is representing, supposed to represent St. Cloud, that's Fred Hawkins. I don't see him here tonight, okay? He and his family members financially benefit from the monetary arrangements made by the county for the J, what?
Thank you.
For the JED, can you guys hear this?
No, I, this was running, I couldn't hear what you were saying. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, now I can hear it. I said we have one county commissioner that's supposed to represent St. Cloud, and that's Fred Hawkins. The other four are there, and Fred and his family financially benefit from the arrangements made for this coal ash dumping. And I just want to say, he's not here, but, you know, there's a lot of smart people in this room, a lot of, and I'll say this to Mr. Manzera, emotions do matter. You don't have to make an emotional decision to care about things. You can use data, you can have both. You can be emotional about the potential impact on people's lives, and you can still use hardcore data to make a decision. And I think that's what's been proposed here, and let's get some real data to do that. But you know what's a shame? It's a crying shame that we have to do any of this. It is a crying shame. And I asked before, did any of y'all pick up the phone and talk to Fred? You see him every week at church, I presume, Nathan? And furthermore, if Fred benefits financially from this, and you practice tithing at your church, that means your church is benefiting financially from this as well. And I don't think that's a good position to be in. So I will just offer this. There's all kind of risk that are involved in this situation. Yes, there's a risk if we, you know, get sued by these guys. Who cares? The real risk is you should, I care about getting sued, and they shouldn't be doing it. But the real risk here is you all personally can get sued for not protecting the public interest. If you don't believe me, call up Flint, Michigan, ask those guys about their risk, the impact for them financially. So, yeah, I believe you want, most of you here want to do the right thing, from what I can tell, but you shouldn't even be in this position. You're only in this position because a sweet deal got rushed through the county, and it benefited Fred Hawkins and his family, and that's not right. By the way, you have other avenues here. We not only should care about the leachate, we should be suing the county for taking this into the dump, period. Okay? Where's the lawsuit for that? Where's the lawsuit for that? And beyond that, what's stopping you guys from calling the governor? Our governor cares about the environment. You want this to stop? Call the governor and tell him to put some pressure on the county, that this is baloney. And, you know, when you dump something in the dump, what does a citizen pay? Forty-some dollars for a container? These guys are paying, what, two bucks a ton or something? A ton? What, how is that even possible? Furthermore, last point. You know why we don't have basements in Florida? All of you know why. We have a water table that you dig a foot down in the ground, and you hit water. So all that stuff in that dump, forget the leachate, all the stuff in that dump is getting into our water system somewhere. It's already done. There ought to be a lawsuit to stop it, there ought to be a lawsuit to have a big fund forced on JED to have a mitigation fund for the potential harm in the future. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this side who hasn't done so, if you have something new to add?
Got one.
My name's Wayne Thorpe, Seven Oaks Drive, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm not here with any group, but I am here for my children. You know, I see, I see a lot of you out there on the streets, you know, shopping, you know, having a great time, and appreciate, you know, the getting up and putting the people first, and we do appreciate that. You know, I see the groups here, you know, they're talking on social media, and that's wonderful, you know, it gets, it gets the word out, we see it on the street. There's a lot of us out here that aren't part of these groups that have your back. And when I read that contract, I said, you know what, I had to come and see each individual's face, because my children are not going to be in that hospital bed.
No.
Okay? And, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, yeah.
Saving money.
Closing it down. No, it's hard not getting emotional, you know, with having children, being a father. It's one of those where it's like, I honestly, what happens to me doesn't matter. It's the future of my children. I want to be, I want to say, you know what, St. Cloud, I'm proud of you, you know? I want to take my kids peach picking. I want to take them out to the fields, have a great time. But when I do see that purple pipe turn on, and the grass is getting water, we don't go outside, because we don't know what's in that water. Okay? And when I read that, what they were asking for you guys to do, to get down on your knees and say, you know what, we're going to pay you the money, we're going to give you more time, we're going to let you dump more leachate. What you guys said here today, you know what? I appreciate it. We appreciate it, because we're going to stand with you, we're going to fight with you, okay? The $4 million doesn't scare us, okay? I hear bankruptcy, $4 million is not going to bankrupt St. Cloud, okay? Soldier City was built by strong people, and we're going to continue to fight for our reputation, and we're going to be here for our children, and we appreciate you guys taking a stand and putting the people first. Okay? County Commissioners, you know, it's one of those where, you know, I went to a couple of those meetings, I was, I was kind of, what do I tell my friends and family that don't live here? Do you move here? Do you come and visit? I don't know. Am I proud? I am, I am proud now that we have a voice, that we're going to be heard, my children, they can go to school here and be heard, okay? And we are, we, the people, are behind you of St. Cloud, and we are not going to take a knee, because if we do that now with this company, there's going to be plenty of other companies seeing that there's a way in, and it's not going to stop. So, appreciate you guys. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys, thank you, sir.
Need to make sure and fill out a record, please.
My name is Kathy Dar, 6799 Chad Jason Road, St. Cloud, Florida, 34773. I just basically want to let you all know that these county commissioners are doing all of these shady things, we know what they're doing, we know how they're doing it. And one of them, in particular, is not allowing AES or any other inspector in there to do it themselves. They are doing it themselves, while the rest of them stand around and go, oh, okay. They literally hand it back to them and say, here you go. The last testing that they did was at a base of a telephone pole, which we all know is full of arsenic. That was not tested with the coal ash. That was not up on top of that hill piled up with coal ash, and the test did not come from there. So, again, we cannot put up with this, playing around with people's lives, we can't put up with JED being allowed to get away with these certain things that they're doing, and the cover-ups that are happening. It's too much. This city does not deserve that. These people of this city do not deserve that. And JED landfill does not deserve to get another piece of paper saying that they can do whatever they want. We've had enough of that, and it's time to put a stop to it. And as far as attorneys and being sued and all this other malarkey, that's enough of that, too. We literally need to put our feet down and say, that's enough. And we will not accept any more testing from JED that we don't get to do ourselves, and put people in there that we know are going to fight for us and not the back pockets of Fred Hawkins. Thank you.
This time, I'll return to the council for any final discussion before we consider our vote. Any additional comment?
I'll do it. Go ahead.
Wait a second. Mr. Manzera, first.
Just wanted to clarify, assuming the motion moves forward, the city council would be directing the city manager to move forward with obtaining special legal counsel to address the issue, as well as the experts necessary to do whatever testing is deemed appropriate? Because you can give that authority to the city manager, assuming that's part of the motion.
Yes, that's part of my motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Askew.
Would that be coming back with a price of what this would entail? Or we just...
That's what I'm asking, because I don't necessarily think you have that much, we may or may not have that much time to do that. You may have to move a little quicker than that. To get somebody on board. If you can, I'm sure the city manager will bring it back, but if not, he may not.
Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. And we are going to get, in that motion, we are going to get somebody that's going to come here and test all of this leachate, we're going to test all of the wells, everything else, anything that we're drinking or non-podable and potable that we can be tested, we need to have it test here. Is that...
Well, I think my motion was to get the environmental experts, like, and then we'll just do what their recommendations are. I'm not going to try to put parameters on them, I mean, we're going to go hire the experts.
They can do that?
And then they would do whatever they need to support our initiative.
Can we make sure it's not AES?
Yes, don't hire AES.
No AES. All right.
So, I, sorry, I do have a question. So, do we have to go through, like, a whole procurement to do this, or is this something that can be handled through your office, under your authority? I mean, to hire the attorney to get the consultants?
Without getting too much into it, I do not think you have to go through a public procurement process.
Perfect, thank you.
Would it be, go through you, Dan Managers, or would it be...
No, it would go through the city manager.
City manager, okay.
However, I do not think to hire any of the, any of the individuals, any of the entities we're talking about right now, you'd have to go through the public procurement process.
I'm just trying to see if I, I have no idea what the cost would be, I'm thinking, give me authorization of the $250,000.
Well, I think you can, you may be able to circle back on it when it comes to the final cost. What I, my suggestion, my only thought was that to get somebody in place, you may have to move a little quicker. What the ultimate cost is may be something that come back to the city council at a meeting, but we can get a better idea.
Especially meeting or something real quick.
But, I mean, I think you'd be able to do that, but to get someone retained through the city manager's office, we'd have to move a little quicker.
Councilmember Askew.
So, you're, we're talking about some of this testing, is this, some of this testing, can this start now? Can we collect bottles? Can you do whatever you need to do to, to build up a case? You can't do it through staff? You can't do it through...
Mayor.
I think we're already doing testing. Now, we have Flowers Laboratories, a third-party independent testing that's doing our downstream leachate testing, correct. So, bring in another company to validate that.
I...
You don't need... That's our company, that's the city's contracted, Flowers Laboratories is our contracted, we have a continuing services contract.
So, you just brought up a point. So, we actually do have data. So, we could take that data that we have now, that we do on quarterly, Mr. Wiltshire? Couldn't we use that?
It's got to be a certain test.
Now, the data that we've, obviously, from the testing, I've told you that we've been doing over time, that's your, what you want to call your background data. And there are some, and some of the testing's been done, it's been done since the coal ash been put in the landfill. So, you have a, you have a historical background, because you've had several, number of years of testing that you've done prior, and you have some that's been done recently, and then you're talking about doing some additional testing beyond that. But Flowers is the lab, as the city manager said, that we already have under contracts.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, last thing. Lynette, what you were saying of just letting the environmental attorney or environmental, what did you say?
Environmental consultants.
Consultant, okay.
I would think we just need to get the experts in the field, and then follow whatever recommendations they have. Like, I know there's water quality testing that happens at my job, and there's, it's not like you can just go turn the faucet on and stick a bottle under there, you can't even breathe on it if you have mercury fillings, you know, there's specific protocols that you have to follow. So, I would think whatever data we have is background information that they could utilize, but they would also do their own testing, and I don't know which tests should do or shouldn't do, or if the tests we're doing are the appropriate ones or not, I'm not, I don't have the expertise in this. That's why I'm saying, let's get the people that have the expertise independently reviewing, and then, you know, this whole time, I'm still saying, we're not taking this agreement, whatever their settlement offer, we're not taking their settlement offer, and there's no leachate coming into our system while we're doing all this.
Right, I agree with that. But the same, same question is, beside Flowers or whatever we've got testing right now, I think I would rather, myself, what I'd rather see, is independent, let's have this, you know, environmental study person to come here, and somebody to come here and talk to us. If we have to have a special meeting, workshop or whatever, and sit down and talk to them, and they're going to tell us, we're going to do this, 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 and we need to get an environmentalist to do the water and everything else from A to Z that we need to get it, let's do it. I don't want to miss anything, I don't want to be after the, after the fact saying, whoops, we missed something, we need to go back and add something. I want to get it all done at the beginning. So, I don't want to have somebody that, if the county, or the city, has been using the Flowers, I mean, if they, if they can do everything, that's, that's fine, if they want to come out and give us, talk to this environmentalist and say they can do all this stuff, then I'm fine. But if they can't, let's hire somebody that can. That's what I want. I want honesty and transparency. I want to see transparency. That's what I want. Thanks, sir.
Any other input from council? So, the motion, and second is that we hire an environmental consultant who will help oversee the process of testing the water and helping us determine where we're at and where we need to go next.
Well, that's the second part of the motion.
And the second part of the motion is that we not...
The first part was hire attorneys to fight this.
Yes.
If I can just, for the council's benefit, set the stage, this matter, the action that is currently in place is that the city council took on June 13th, which was to prohibit the discharge of leachate into the city system. What we brought it back for you tonight is to consider a waste connection offer to resolve a potential conflict under the contract. The motion rejects that offer.
Correct.
So, basically, that leaves the status quo. So, basically, that leaves a status quo, which is no dis, no leachate is being, is being discharged into the system. So, in all likelihood, to set the stage, Waste Connection obviously believes that they have contractual rights, that they have, that they have the right to enforce, so it's very likely there's going to be a lawsuit filed against the city based on that. With that in mind, to address that, based on the direction we hear today, the city council is going to move forward with having special litigation council to handle the utility side, the experts that will be needed to address the defense of that lawsuit, because that's where we would envision the next step is, because the council has said, we're not going to change the decision we made in June. And so, that's what, that's what I understand the motion to be. All this other discussion about is really going to be motivated by what the, what the folks that are representing the city from a technical perspective and a legal perspective are determined is the best way to address this. What testing needs to be done, who's going to do the testing, how it's all going to be presented.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, last question. Dan, can, I, I heard somebody said something about maybe Dan or the city manager or somebody could make a phone call to one of our lobbyists to talk to somebody up in Tallahassee, and let's see where we're at with what's happening here in the city of St. Cloud, and ask the governor to take a look and let's see what's going on here. I want the governor to look and see what's here, and not just, not just what we're looking at.
We certainly, certainly that, the city manager can do that.
Transparency, that's where I want.
So, are we clear on what the motion is?
We are.
Clear, what else? Any other discussion from council?
I guess I'll state it before we get rolling here. This is bigger than really us. This is DEP and EPA. This is our, getting our politicians that are way above us to change what rules that they have coming into our state, especially from Puerto Rico or wherever it's coming from. So, I'm not a chemist. I don't know any of that stuff. I'd really want to turn on the faucet and have clean water. I think everybody else here does. I'm a big believer in having some, at least some strong data in testing, so I'm just leaving it at that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have a long agenda, so we have other items that need to move on to.
I apologize to anyone else that we've kept waiting all of this time. Thank you for your patience. Brings us to public hearings, item number one.
First public hearing, an introduction for ordinance number 2019-31. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 1.85 acres identified as Mr. Carwash, located east of Orange Avenue, south of East 10th Street, west of Crawford Avenue, and north of 13th Street, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes.
Good afternoon, Andre Anderson, Planning Zone Director. Mr. Mayor, could I also ask that the clerk read item two and item three as they're related?
Madam Clerk, will you read items two and three?
First public hearing, an introduction for ordinance number 2019-32. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of commercial to approximately 1.85 acres identified as Mr. Carwash, located east of Orange Avenue, south of East 10th Street, west of Crawford Avenue, and north of 13th Street, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability, and effect severability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing, an introduction for ordinance number 2019-33. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of HB Highway Business compatible with commercial future land use designation for approximately 1.85 acres identified as Mr. Carwash, located east of Orange Avenue, south of East 10th Street, west of Crawford Avenue, and north of 13th Street, providing for entering the designation official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication severability and effective date.
Thank you. This is an annexation of a piece of property approximately 1.85 acres into the city limits of St. Cloud through a voluntary annexation. It is contiguous to the city limits, and the existing land use within the county is low-density residential, and existing zoning is RM2, residential multifamily to family, and it's compatible with the surrounding area. The request, of course, is to change the land use, to annex into the city limits, and it is consistent with the growth management strategic goal. The DRC at their meeting on 5/2/19 recommend approval of ordinance 2019-31. The Planning Commission at their meeting on June 18th also recommend approval based on the 16 findings of our Land Development Code, and as the city council do the same. The companion item to this is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment related to the same parcel, and it is to assign a future land use designation on this piece of property that, again, is adjacent to city limits. As I said previously, the existing land use is low-density residential. The proposed future land use will be commercial with a floor air ratio of 0.75. Again, it's consistent with the strategic goal for growth management. Staff at their meeting on 5/2 recommend approval of ordinance 2019-32. The Planning Commission at their meeting on June 18th recommend approval based on the 16 findings in the Land Development Code, and we ask that the city council do the same. The third component is the zoning map amendment to assign a zoning district to this piece of property that, if approved, is within the city limits. The existing zoning is RM2, residential multifamily. The proposed zoning would be highway business consistent with the proposed use of commercial. Again, it's consistent with the growth management goal, strategic goal, and staff at their meeting on 5/2 recommend approval of ordinance 2000-33. The Planning Commission at their meeting on June 18th also recommend approval of, based on the 16 findings in the Land Development Code, and as the city council do the same. And this is a summary of three items that we'd ask that you approve in that order.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Rachel Myers. I represent Bose Development, 6744 New Independence Parkway, Wing Garden, Florida. I brought some additional renderings if you wanted to take a look at the car wash or if you had any questions regarding.
Sure. Should we just pass it around?
Sure.
Can you put them up on the viewer?
That would be up to. That's basically just the site plan. I kind of wanted you to look at the elevations. Normally, when we go to different building departments, car washes, they just see a block building, nothing much to it. We took a lot of consideration with the city of St. Cloud. We developed a Jiffy Lube across the street from it. We had a really good experience with the city of St. Cloud and took into consideration your view for the future, and put a lot of time and, and resources to kind of develop a building that doesn't look like your standard car wash.
No.
So, this is not a cheap car wash. But in meeting with planning, we, we had really good conversations about what your view was 10, 15 years from now, and wanted to provide you something that's different So, if you have any questions?
Is this very factual as what your, these pictures depicted?
Yes, this is our Gen 1. This is the Gen 1 building. This is their prototype building now. Mr. Carwash has 320 car washes, of which 280 have been rebranded. So, there were existing car washes, like a Sweetwater, and they re, these are new construction.
But they all look like this one here?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. And this one will be over here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Matheny.
So, I know everyone on council knows I don't like one of the car washes in town, so that was going to be one of my comments about, you know, and I talked to Andre about this separately, and he said that we worked with our architectural standards, and you guys had a really nice product, but I hadn't seen it, so thank you so much for that. That was just going to be my blanket comment, like, please.
It's not purple.
And then, the other thing I like with your building here, which I don't know if this is going to be exactly what you're, like Mr. Cooper's saying, but you don't have a ton of signage all over it either, like, a lot of different, you know, vacuums and this and spray. I mean, there was, like, signage everywhere on the other ones, too, which are just, is a little bit, I love this, it looks very nice. Thank you.
There's directional signage for, of course, but other than that, no.
And I like that you've got the building up against 192, not the traffic. You've got, like, the building, so the traffic pattern is, like, buffered behind it. It looks very nice, thank you.
Is there going to be any other, like, your vacuum is going to be on the outside? That you're not showing that now?
She showed it.
I missed it. It was too pretty. I missed it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the vacuum there.
Oh, I missed that. I saw that, and it was black and white, and it's like, okay. I thought it was just one of your, flipping through the pages. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the side? If not, can we move forward on the first item, ordinance number 219-31? Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion from Member Matheny and a second from Member Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I entertain a motion on item 219-32?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper and a second from Member Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then, could I have a motion on item number, ordinance number 2019-33?
So moved.
Second.
Again, we have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second from Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item four. I believe you want items four, five, and six read together, please.
That's correct.
First public hearing, an introduction for ordinance number 2019-36. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 1.67 acres identified as Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road, located the northwest corner of Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First public hearing, an introduction for ordinance number 2019-37. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation change of commercial to approximately 1.67 acres identified as Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road, located the northwest corner of Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability, and effect severability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing, an introduction for ordinance number 2019-38. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of NB Neighborhood Business, compatible with commercial future land use designation for approximately 1.67 acres identified as Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road, located at the northwest corner of Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication severability and effective date.
Thank you, Andre Anderson, Planning Zone Director. This, as the clerk said, is a voluntary annexation for 1.67 acres of land to be brought into city limits. It is contiguous to our city limits, and it's reasonably compact, consistent with Section 171.044 Florida statutes. It's adjacent to our city limits and enclosed on all sides, and it's actually considered an enclave. The existing future land use in the county is low-density residential, existing zoning is estate development E1. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts at this time. It is consistent with our growth strategic goal for growth management, and the staff at their meeting on May 10th recommend approval of ordinance 2019-36. The Planning Commission at their meeting on Ju, July 17th also recommend approval of ordinance 2019-36 based on the 16 findings in our Land Development Code, and as the city council do the same. The next item is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment that's consistent with the proposed annexation. It is for the same property of land. Again, the land use in the county is low-density residential, future land use is commercial, proposed future land use is commercial with a recommended floor air ratio of 0.50. It's compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to facilities at this time. It is consistent with the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff at our meeting on May 10th recommend approval of ordinance 2019-37. The Planning Commission at their meeting also recommend approval based on the 16 findings in our Land Development Code, and as the city council also do the same. The final component is a zoning map amendment for the same parcel. It is, again, zoned estate development E1, and the proposed zoning would be neighborhood business, which, again, with a floor air of 0.5. At this time, there is not a specific use identified for the property, but the applicant can explain what they may do on the property. But based on our discussions, that was the reason for recommending neighborhood business based on the fact that it would be neighborhood serving uses and not highway commercial uses. It will be compatible with the surrounding area, and there, again, no adverse impacts to our services at this time. Staff at its meeting on May 10th recommend approval of ordinance 2019-38. The Planning Commission at their meeting on July 17th also recommend approval based on the 16 findings, and as the city council do the same. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to ask Andre a question? Are you wanting to ask Andre a question?
I do.
Okay.
Can I ask him? I don't really have any issue with this. I'm just questioning something. You said that this is an enclave, but are the maps not right in our packet because it's...
Probably not.
Do you have a map that shows that it's an enclave?
Okay, well, I thought it was, based on stafford, definitely it was an enclave.
Okay.
It may not be.
Is the applicant here who would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is April Fisher. I'm with Fisher Planning and Development, 6750 Bay Shore Drive, St. Cloud, Florida, 34771. I'm here representing the property owners tonight, and just to be brief, the two main things that we were thinking about when we put this application together is that in this area where there's a lot of residential development that has taken place and is taking place, there's very limited support commercial uses where people can get to quickly just to grab a bite to eat or stop by a local store when they need to. So, we thought that this is a great location to have a commercial use that supports the local neighborhoods. At the same time, we wanted to be sensitive to the fact that this is a residential area. So, we wanted to have a zoning designation that was restrictive on what could possibly be allowed here. Because we're at this stage of annexation, future land use, and zoning designation, we're not to a site plan yet, so we didn't want there to be an opportunity for something to get to this location that doesn't meet that sensitivity to the residential area. So, the property owners have envisioned having something such as a deli, or an office, or a bank, something that is not going to be intrusive on the local neighborhoods. We concur with staff's recommendation as well as the Planning Commission, and we did provide responses to the 16 standards that are required. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have, but I do want to be brief in respect of your time. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Would any one of the audience like to speak to this item or these items? If not, could I entertain a motion for ordinance number 219-36?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Could I entertain a motion for ordinance number 219-37?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Cooper. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then last of all, ordinance number 219-38.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number seven, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing for resolution number 2019-160R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida amending resolution number 2018-153R, which adopted the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city, finding, finding the city for additional projects and programs and various funds, not including the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds, making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Good evening, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is budget amendment number four, using water impact fees, a total of $600,000, 75% of that being absorbed by the city for the Narcisi Booster Station, those again being paid by water impact fee contingency and for the $450,000 total. And then 25% of that paid by Toho Water Authority at $150,000 per local agreement. The second part is sanitation fund coming in at $48,200. It's the impact fee analysis, which is necessary in order to adopt an impact fee for the solid waste collection division. Any questions?
None, is it it?
Yes, sir.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for record.
Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I've got a couple of questions regarding the budget. Is this the only thing affected, is this particular amendment on the budget, tonight? Because here's my, here's my question, I'm sorry, Bill. There are four items that I don't know if they're included in the budget or not. One is finishing the ADA project for, you know, public communications of these meetings, is that completed? And is that in the budget, was a question I had. Another question I had is, the firefighters, when they make a call to pick somebody up, I have recent experience, you know, they, when they put somebody on a stretcher, I'm told there's two ways to do that, the way we have been doing it, and then I'm told there's a pretty automatic system that is more firefighter, EMT friendly, that prevents back injuries. There's a more automatic system. And my question is, I'm wondering, does our budget include the ability to cross the board, have that kind of system, because I think we should protect those firefighters and EMTs from back injuries? Plus, it's a big expense, but just on a principle of it. I want to know if that's in the budget. And the, and the, since tonight we brought up this whole thing about lawsuits and resources, whatever, I don't know if your budget needs another amendment to handle all of those expenses, or if you have it in some sort of contingency fund. What I'm suggesting is that we maybe need an amendment to make sure we have the costs covered for tonight's proposals regarding the coal ash situation. And I had a fourth one, but I can't think of what it is, so that's it.
All right, let me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Turgeon.
First off, we do have a contingency. We will have to do an additional budget amendment once we allocate those costs out. So I'll have to figure out what it's gonna cost when I get through procurement on that, which we'll do very quickly. The second thing, all of our rescue units do have a lift system, but there's a new stretcher system that's in the budget for next year, and we're continuing to push forward with, to meet all the ADA requirements for the website and access for all of our citizens.
And that, okay, but it's not done yet, right?
It's in the proposed budget. No, it's in, it's in the proposed budget, thank you, Dan.
It's sure taking a long, I'm just gonna say it, I know you're doing your best, but it's sure taking a long darn time.
We are not the only city experiencing this, and again, you know, we want to make sure.
But it's just, it's just so painful. And the last, I do remember my last point. What's the status on the sidewalk that was gonna be done on 17th Street that the young lady came on last year? And I, the last I recall, it was supposed to be done at the end of the summer. So, I hope that that, if it's not done, please tell me it's in the budget and it's gonna be done.
It is in the budget.
And it's gonna be done expeditiously, I hope.
It is, it's in design phase right now.
But when's it gonna be done?
As soon as the design's done, probably first of the year, it should go pretty quickly.
So what happened to end of the summer? That's all I'm saying, we, we did say that publicly, thank you so much.
Government doesn't go fast.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to item number seven? Do we have any discussion or motion by council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to council, action, item number one.
Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. Resolution 2019-17R is requesting that the city accept 1.67 acres of real property that's currently being operated as a cemetery by the East St. Cloud Narcisi Civic Club. On the, on the map, if you've ever been out to Mount Pea Cemetery, it appears that that section is a part of Mount Pea Cemetery, there's no barriers around it, but it's right off, you can get to it from Crawford or Mount Pea Cemetery, off of 10th Street, I'm sorry. And I'm gonna give you, I guess, a little history, and Dan, I'm gonna let Dan do it, he's been here longer than me.
So you're gonna let me do it now?
Well, I'll try, but if I, if I miss a date up, then you'll have to correct me. So, this property used to be in, within the Mount Pea Cemetery, but back in 71, the, the property was transferred to the East St. Cloud Narcisi Civic Club for them to operate the cemetery as their own private cemetery. It had been operating like that for many years. Few years ago, before my time, so more than 12 years ago, the, the club was having a hard time keeping up with the mowing, weed eating, all that kind of stuff, maintenance, so the city actually started maintaining the grounds like that. Back in November of 2017, they, we were approached by the club. They were having some tax issues, so they needed help, so the property didn't go into foreclosure?
No, there was a potential that a tax deed was, a tax certificate was gonna issue because there were unpaid taxes on the property, that was the first thing that came to our attention. Actually, the city received a notice because the tax collector thought the city owned the property. And then we reached out and contacted the representatives of the club, and that's what started the initial discussions back in 2017. And then, we ended up having a meeting with the representatives at the time. They explained to us that there, there are issues with being able to continue to maintain it, but at that meeting in 2017, they decided they were not interested in having the city take over the property, and then they resolved the tax issue themselves. And so, fast forward to where we are today, right now, they still have, they're still having the same issues with being able to maintain it. This property was essentially, as best you can describe, was basically managed from a perspective of burials and funerals by a couple, a couple of really good-hearted people who are basically kind of doing it, you know, without any compensation of their own, as part of the club. And those folks have just gotten on in age, and so there really isn't anybody who is ready to take over the operation of the club or the ma-, most importantly, the maintenance of the, of the cemetery. Obviously, the city's maintaining it, but there's a lot more to their cemetery than just cutting the grass and, and making sure that, you know, trash is picked up and things like that, so. And then, of course, I think they reached out to the mayor, maybe sent a letter to the mayor saying we'd like the city to reconsider taking over the property and incorporating it into the city's cemetery.
I'd like to also add, this cemetery is basically, belongs to a group of black individuals who, most of them are very poor. The board itself is, only has a couple of people left. They can't maintain this cemetery, it's already being maintained by the city. And, you know, out of respect for maintaining this piece of property that's contiguous to our cemetery, that's already considered by most people who drive through, is perceived as, it does belong to the city. And, and there's just some issues that, you know, these individuals do not have the means to maintain it. And we certainly need to consider stepping in and ministering to this segment of our, of our community. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, just a quick question or two. Are we gonna have, I, I have no problem to taking this. I think we probably need to help them, and we probably are the only caretakers of the future, right now, endeavor this, we need to do it. Are we need to, the grave sites and the, do we need to remove some of them, move them? Do you know that, how many are counted there? Is, how many empties, plots? Do we know all of that stuff?
Well, well, part of the item before you is not only to approve the acceptance of the property, but also to basically authorize city staff to move forward with what needs to be done to basically document the burials that are in this part of the cemetery, plait it out, do the, the, the.
Headsets, headstones, you need to do some.
Underground, I don't think we're gonna be moving any remains. It is very, very difficult to move remains. I think the only, and it's very, very, they're very difficult process to do that. And it has to do with notifying next of kin and things like that before you can move remains. So, I think that, I think the plan is to identify where there, where there are remains, note them in some way, to the extent the remains can be identified, obviously there'd be, we would note that, but to the extent that they can't be identified, we, we would leave the remains where they are and just identify it as a, you know, grave where there are unidentified remains, so.
In the area that is not used right now, in that plot right there, will that be replotted? In other words, the city will do that and will, will allow, will know how many graves, stones will have?
Yeah, but I don't necessarily think, and Stephanie correct me wrong, but my understanding is a good portion of this property is very wet. So, I don't think the city needs, should really look at this as if where we're gonna get a whole bunch of new, new burials, you know, plots that we can turn around and sell. We will, to the extent, to the extent you can, you will. But, it's really about maintaining, I think, as the mayor, or someone said, maintain in the future and perpetuity that these, that these remains are, you know, respectfully maintained and, in perpetuity.
So the city is not gonna try and sell these vacant plots down the road later?
No, I think the city will, so, will sell them. I just don't think you should, I don't, I'm not sure how many actual lots you're gonna be able to get out of this in addition to the existing cemetery.
Soon before you, that was a question, how soon?
Well, part of the, part of the process tonight is we're gonna have to hire some individuals who are gonna basically have to go out there and surveyers, and then, and they're gonna have to resurvey and replat the thing and identify how many spaces there are available. We're also gonna have to do some ground penetration to find out where there are remains because there really weren't, there aren't very good records kept as to where, where remains are actually buried, so.
So, pretty much all the cost entailed for future now, it's coming on us, so. And it's probably a good.
Yeah, and that's why I think, Stephanie, what's the amount of money we're talking about?
Thirty to forty thousand. Yeah, thirty to forty thousand.
Yeah, we put that, and part of that also includes, because this, this club, and it's, this club has not been, it, it has not been a legally active entity for, since I think 1981. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to reinstate that entity, and we're gonna actually have, the city's gonna, to do that, part of this is the city's actually gonna have to pay some money to the state of Florida to reinstate that entity, so that entity and the remaining directors of that entity, and there's, there's two we've been dealing with, can sign, sign the property over to the city. So as part of that, there's some money that's gonna have to be spent to give, to pay the state. We're gonna try to work on that, see if we can avoid that, but I think we're gonna have to.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you, can you take it by maintenance map?
We probably could, but, we, we probably, we probably could.
By maintenance map, because they're saying we've been maintaining it, so by statute, Florida statute, if you maintain, is it seven years in this scenario? I think it's seven?
Yeah.
Then, then it becomes ours, you just file a maintenance map.
I mean, I haven't really, that's a good idea, I haven't looked at it, we've done that, we've, we've done that once. We did that, that actually on the 10th Street realignment, where's Kevin, he probably remembers. We did that on that, we did a, we did a maintenance map on that piece when we did, years ago, when the realignment of 10th Street was done. So, we can, I hadn't thought about that, but we can definitely look into that, it's a good idea.
Before you spend the money.
Well, yeah, certainly don't wanna hand, I certainly don't wanna write a check to the state to just for, for one action by an entity that is no longer to be in existence after it does this.
So that could be the first thing that we could do?
Yeah, I'll look in, I'll look into that, yeah, it's a very good idea.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I was certain I was gonna have to come up here again. Here's a question, if this piece of property is something we collect, we're supposed to collect taxes on, and we take it over, then we're not gonna get any taxes, correct?
No, ma'am, that was actually a mistake, when, and when we had the original meeting with the folks that were involved, we actually pointed that out, that we did not, we did not understand why the tax collector was showing it as taxable property, because this club is a not-for-profit. So, so when we went through that, that's actually how they resolved it, they did not pay the taxes.
Because they had no taxes due?
There, exactly, it was, the, the property was reclassified after the meeting we had with them back in 2017. The folks reached out to the tax collector. We just brought that up because that's how this whole issue initially came to the city's attention. So there is no taxes doing that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking about, and this is just an idea, why wouldn't we get, ask another cemetery if they're interested in taking over this property as part of their business, and then we could collect taxes on it, could we not? Instead of having a thirty, forty thousand dollar bill every year?
Well, it's not every year.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's a one-time expenditure to get it up with.
That's a three-year.
No, it's one-time. I, I, I mean, you could do that, but then there would be, there would be coordination problems. For the most part, frankly, I think most people that drive that area think this is part of the city cemetery. So it would be, there'd be an interesting coordination effort if a private entity was operating.
I'm certainly all in favor of honoring the people that are buried there and taking care of that. I just had a question, thank you so much.
Well, I starting to believe there's enough available property that could, that's usable property that long-term could pay for itself eventually.
Motion approved for resolution 2019-170R, but with the caveat that if the city attorney finds, we can do a maintenance map to take the property instead of.
We'll certainly look at that. I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Trace, second by Councilmember Cooper, with that caveat. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number two.
Resolution number 2019-187R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida approving the use of $500,000 from the St. Cloud OUC Orlando Utilities Commission Business Development and Customer Retention Fund created by the Interlocal Agreement of April 25th, 1997, for the city's use of funds on the Madison Grove Local Government Contribution Loan for the development of a senior affordable apartment project with the City of St. Cloud and providing an effective date.
Mr. Menzeris.
I think, you know, this is, as a, as a follow-up to the discussion we had at the last Stevens Independent Special District meeting, this is the first of two items related to this local government contribution loan. This is the piece that would make the funds available, should the City Council agree to do this loan with the Madison Grove folks for their project. That, we anticipate, will be on, on your next council meeting agenda. And so, the agreement that the city has with OUC allows for the Business Development Customer Retention Fund to be used for essentially business and economic development purposes. It has a cap of $500,000 a year on it, without having, without, without having to go back to the OUC governing the board. So the way, the way we structured this is that this is actually in a.
So, the way, the way we structured this is that this is actually an approval to use five hundred thousand dollars from that fund, not in the next fiscal year, but in the following fiscal year. And because that, it's anticipated that if you are to do the, the loan agreement with Madison Grove, the money would not have to be paid until such time as they reach certificate of occupancy, or when they're ready to do it, and so that would likely be in the, not this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year. The loan amount is anticipated to be five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which would give them the, the, which would give them the ability to do better in the lottery that they're moving for their financing. So, we would anticipate if they do that, get that, that we would likely come back to the city council for the other sixty thousand piece in this coming fiscal year. But we wanted to make sure that the lion's share of the funds were at least made available so that the, and so that OUC was aware of it. Our agreement with OUC requires them to be given notice of this, and so that's why it's on your agenda tonight, so that they're aware of it. We have met with OUC, Mr. Sturgeon and I presented it at the last joint committee meeting, contract committee meeting, they were very much in favor of it. It obviously is a project that if it goes through will generate additional electric utility services, which is what they're important, but they're also very much committed to helping St. Cloud with economic development and business development issues.
Is the applicant here would like to speak?
They're here, they're for the project, they can tell you anything about the project, but this really isn't their item tonight, but they can talk to you about the project.
If you'd like to talk about the project.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Bannick, American Residential Communities. So, yeah, as Dan was saying, as I understand, this is just in order for OUC to be able to release the funds. Of course, we will answer any questions that you'd like about the project itself. The last time, last week, last Thursday, we were in here, and we were discussing the amendment to the contract for this project, Madison Grove, and then this, this had come up, and we kind of briefly went over it and what the requirements were, you know, and I, and I understand this came up, it's, you know, over five hundred thousand dollars, and it's, you know, to be paid back over eighteen years, and that's, and it's a shocker when you, you know, when you, when you first hear it. Since then, we have spoken to our council and our accountants to ensure, to see if there was anything we could do about the eighteen years, and they have confirmed that we can do something about it, it can be paid back much shorter than the eighteen years, but we're, we're still working out the details. We just wanna make sure that, you know, with the state, Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which is the agency that regulates the tax credits, we wanna make sure that we're doing everything in the legal limits for that, so. But, we are working on making this a short-term loan instead of a long-term, so a couple different options here, which, as we get the information, we're gonna be presenting it to you, and you'll have all this information before our next meeting where, you know, we're asking for the approval of the loan.
Thank you, councilman Cooper.
Thank you. I just, I just have a problem of, I don't, I, I know where the money's coming from, OUC, and I understand the use for what it's for, I just don't believe that, I've seen it from Stevens Plantation, we still got it, everybody knows, eighteen, twenty years, we still got it, we still got it for sale, it's still not sold. I'm looking, government and develop, developers should not get in the hand-in-hand of swapping money back and forth. I just absolutely stop, I ain't never gonna do it again. Don't ask me, I ain't giving it to you, I'm sorry. But, as far as, in eighteen years, I don't care if it's six or five years. If, if you're not needing to put it into your escrow account, and when the, OUC is just gonna help the developer to get it right here when you're gonna build it, that's fine. I don't have a problem. Just don't put it in your account and don't start, you could spend it or not spend it, I don't know, whatever we're gonna do with it, what you're gonna do with it. But, and I understand that you're sending up to Tallahassee and that, because the city of St. Cloud signed up and joined with you, and gives you the help, you need to work it, work yourself. Most builder developers, they do theirselves. You, you're in a lotto deal and, and you can get this one year, three years, five years, or ten years before it comes. We're tying this up for a long time. I think, I think we can sell this, this property out here, a lot quicker than what you're gonna build that seven-story. Now, you tell me the truth.
Okay, so, yeah, a couple things on that. So, we're, we're only asking for the commitment, so if we don't get the project, we don't get the loan, just to start off with. We're not asking for the loan-
I'm still not giving the money, I don't care, I'm sorry.
Well, you're not, exactly, we're not asking for the money now, so, the way it works is that the requirement is you don't have to accept the money from the local government until ninety days after construction completion. So, so if we get this thing this year, okay, and break ground, let's just say, you know, everything works out, we'll break ground in August, maybe September of next year, that's a one-year construction completion date, that brings us into two thousand twenty-one. So, we wouldn't even need the money until two thousand twenty-one, the money just has to be used for construction, and then, like I said, we're working on a payback term, we might be able to pay it back right after construction, we're working on that, where we, the eighteen years won't be a requirement. So, if, if financially we can do it and make it work, we can make that money returned right away.
You still not understand what I'm saying. I just don't wanna get it in your account or signed up to come to you. If, if it, OUC wants to give it through the city and wants to just give it to Madison Grove and build that thing, I ain't got no problem. It's when you tie it up in some kind of timeframe and, and we're gonna get back and forth, there's a long, the finance is gonna have to account for all this stuff, and that's time and money at cost.
Well, you know, that's one of the things is that you, again, you, I know you, you're saying you could sell the property, you know, maybe next year, maybe the year after, I don't know, but-
It'd be gone.
Right now, we have the opportunity to submit this now and potentially get this sold by next year, okay, with the contract terms that we have right now. So, you know-
How many lot, how many lottos did they win last, last, last year?
So, last year there were eight funded, and without having the local government preference, they only funded two. This year they're only gonna fund one.
Only two.
So, if you have the local preference, you're gonna, you're gonna have, your odds are gonna be statistically, I mean tremendously better. You're gonna be like four out of twenty, maybe twenty-five instead of one out of a hundred and ninety. So, it's, you know-
You're hitting a dotting, doubting Thomas here with me, I'm sorry.
I understand.
You're losing, you're losing on ground, ground with me, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, Mr. Manzares, I guess I'm a little confused, so, this isn't the approval, there's another approval that's gonna come back with the terms of the loan?
Yes, ma'am.
So, why, what is the purpose of this one?
We, well, the, and this is, this probably falls a little bit on my schedule, my timing on how we did this. We had a requirement to, to put OUC on notice that the city council was gonna take action. So, when we were working this, when we were talking to Mr. Bannick and his folks about moving forward with this project, we were actually shooting to have it all on tonight's agenda altogether. So, what we did was we gave the notice to OUC, we talked to OUC, and we told OUC, this is gonna be on the agenda, this piece is gonna be on the agenda. We also anticipated at that time, having a companion item, which would actually be the loan agreement and the resolution approving it and doing all that. We, that, that, that part of the transaction was not completed in time to be able to get it on your agenda tonight. So, Mr. Sturgeon and I talked about it, we talked about it, and then really, we'd already given OUC notice of this meeting tonight, so we didn't, we could've pushed it over until the next meeting, but we just, we figured we'd move forward. And frankly, if the council decides not to do this, I don't think there's, there's an available amount of funds to do the loan anyway. So, if you decide you do not wanna use the funds for this purpose, then I don't, I don't think we'd work up the loan agreement unless Mr. Sturgeon has another available source of funds for this.
So, my concern is, I know, I don't have a very good poker face, I know when y'all said eighteen years at the last meeting, and I'm sure you read my face, like, shock.
What are you doing there?
So, I guess, for me, I need some more terms, I need to understand exactly what, you know, what you're saying is gonna come back in another-
Right, but again, Ms. Matheny, if you don't like the terms, you say no at the next meeting-
Right, I know, but you're not giving me any of that, but there's going to be a follow-up agenda item that you're gonna give me that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I'm gonna wanna know, I'm gonna want a quick payback, or maybe even like a balloon payment right away, like-
Let's lock that in.
Five hundred, you know, we're, it's a five hundred thousand dollar loan, maybe you can pay back four hundred thousand on year one, and then just carry, you know, like, I would want some terms where we would get the money back quicker, and then, I haven't, maybe you guys have said it and I just didn't hear it, but, I mean, we're talking about this is gonna have an interest on it, right? Are they paying us back with interest?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I just, I have a lot of questions about the details, but I guess we'll, I'm, I'm okay like moving it forward, but just knowing that we need to have all the details at the next agenda item.
Councilmember Trace?
So, how much money is remaining in this, in this fund, or is it, you know, it's five hundred thousand per year, but how many more years?
It's two point one million dollars in that fund.
Sitting in there now?
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have an overall strategy for how we're, we're marketing the implementation of that money, or is it just-
No, sir. No, this is a new, this was a new concept that came up in the last, when we did the amendment back in twenty sixteen. For years, this money sat in a fund, and we would, we literally would, would struggle with OUC, getting OUC to let us use that money from it. And without getting too much into the whole history of this thing, the, the fund is derived from a transfer of assets that went from the city to OUC to operate the city system. The city still owns the electric utility, but as you all know, this, OUC manages it. So, at that time, there was a transfer of dollars that went from OUC to the city, but because the city can't sell its electric utility without a referendum, that money was not actually given to the city, it was placed, put into this fund for, for use of the future development of the electric, of electric customers for business development, that's how it was used. The city couldn't actually take the money. Now, that was a deal that, and, and that happened back in nineteen ninety-seven when this was done, so that's where this fund came from. And then, over the years, the fund has been used for some purposes, but it was only until the city started finding a need for economic development funds, that the, that staff went back to OUC and said, can we use some of this money from an economic development perspective? So, I think this is, I think this is the first use of that fund for this purpose, for any purpose associated with business development under that new, under that amendment to the agreement.
And it's not even a grant, it's a, it's a loan, it gets paid back, and then it can be used for something else.
Right, and the way it was set up was the money could be used from that fund, but it, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be repaid.
Yeah.
And that was the idea, because as, you know, a lot of folks know, a lot of municipalities and counties use economic development funds, and they just, and they hand out job incentive programs, or they pay impact fees for, or they even give tax credits which end up being cash out of pocket. So, that's what this fund was set up. One of the reasons why Mr. Sturgeon and I thought it was, it was a little better to bring it back like this is because the Madison Grove folks are talking about a repayment. So, actually, this, the repayment plan and what we told OUC was when, when the payments, when the payments are made, that this money will go back into that fund, and, as opposed, so there'll basically be a repayment source.
Because I, I just, little story, my mother-in-law was on a waiting list at Good Sam for eighteen, eighteen months to try to get a place in Good Sam to move into, so we do need more affordable senior housing options, really all of Osceola County, but specifically St. Cloud, so, I, I'm in favor of the, the project, and especially since we're getting this paid back, I think it's a good idea. I just, like Deputy Mayor Matheny, I like to see more terms once we get to that point, but I'm, I'm fine moving forward with it now.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Why don't we, because we got two point two, three million dollars, why don't we advertise a little bit more to try and get more economic development here? Put that in your brochures and show it and tell it. Don't, don't sit there and be quiet and nobody say anything.
We're not, that's why we did the targeted industries and the targeted economic development, that's what we did several months ago, we passed that, so that money would come out of that fund. And if I could, Mayor, I just wanna say the reason I thought it was important to do this, one, affordable housing for senior citizens, two, it is economic development, and the third thing, it's a sinking fund, it was designed to use for economic and business development. However the terms are, it will be paid back once we come to that agreement and you guys approve.
Well, I certainly know that in other areas where this has been done similar to this, it's had good impact, and-
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
I said, I know other areas where this has been done, it has had a significant impact and, and a great return.
Councilmember Askew?
As a commercial owner myself, it's sort of a sweet deal to get any kind of loan for a small interest, so, I'm okay with loaning you the money, I love the idea of coming in. I would assume that that payment would be coming back a lot quicker than eighteen years. Right. And I would like to see that, and when we, and, and an interest rate that makes sense, these one percenter things, come on.
You're getting four or five percent on anything now.
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, put it-
Actually, we're not, but, but I do have a number.
I can get it in stock, I can, I, let me borrow the money for two percent, I guarantee I can make money. Thank you.
Wendy Colazo, Finance Director, just to answer on the interest side, the reason with the numbers where we are is we gotta look back and set back at our strategic goals here, and if you look at what our investment monopoly is right now, the highest we could get at eighteen percent would be conservatively a point and a half, so a percent and a half, one percent to one point five would be accurate. There is no four to five percent right now, the highest we can get is two and three quarters, and that's really pushing it, at eighteen, at an eighteen-year mark, matching our strategy currently in the city. I also wanna kind of reiterate what the city manager is saying about a sinking fund, we are not in the business to make money, it's just we will be replenishing, which is a benefit, and it falls under all the tiers. The third point to make to this also is, this kinda clears an issue we have with the DSD and selling property and moving on to that goal as well, so everything seems to be pretty aligned, just, you know, the reasons why certain things are listed at eighteen years, like I said, is, is a strategic move as to a mortgage, and we did look at our current investment and where we are, and we have about two to three percent invested in long-term, and that's where the one percent we were okay, we could've grabbed a little bit more, and we were still in negotiations with that, but it was aligned to the city's goals and why that's the percentage, so there is no four to five percent currently. About a year and a half ago, yes, we would've been at four and five percent, but currently, right now, we are, it does not gain any more than the investments that we have sitting in our liquidity at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Mr. Bannick, what's the approximate construction value or, of the whole project?
So, total, total development cost on this, sorry, will be roughly about between seventeen, eighteen million dollars. The actual hard construction costs on this project will be about twelve, twelve and a half million.
And then, just since it's an OUC fund thing, do you know how much the power bill is on one of the other buildings? Just so we know if they ask.
Well, I can tell you this, so, well, one thing I can tell you, so each, each unit will be individually metered, so they will pay their, their own electric. And then, we give a utility allowance to them, and generally for, I can just tell you, for a one-bedroom, our, our utility allowance is probably gonna be between fifty-five and sixty-five dollars, and a two-bedroom's gonna be somewhere around eighty-five to ninety, so, that might give you an idea about what their, you know, what their bills would generally be in there, so.
Okay, thanks.
It's also a tax-paying-
Right.
-project, so-
Property tax, utility tax, all that ever.
I looked at your two other buildings, you're paying, I, I'm around approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property tax-
That's about right.
-would be between the two of them, so, a, a portion of that, at least five point one one two eight would be coming to the city, so.
Would any one of the honors like to speak to the side?
I was an engineer, answer.
Do what?
Mr. Askew's answering like an engineer now, five point one one two eight.
Close to that.
Four, 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 four steps to the right of the decimal.
Hewett Crumpler Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Couple things, I was trying to find out what was the history of this fund, have we given out any money in the past, and for what kind of projects?
Some, some of the money was used for the Stevens project as a credit enhancement on the, on, on the initial loans. I believe some of the money was used for the Buddinger Road expansion, so there were a couple other projects that were, that were done, that we used for, but not for, not, mostly on the utility customer generation side.
Yeah. Just in general, my own opinion is, when I heard this at the workshop, I thought, have we lost our minds? We have somebody who wants to buy a piece of property from us and then borrow part of our money to pay for the property? I mean, yes, there are benefits, yes, we need the housing, yes, we'll get the taxes I mean, yes, there are benefits, yes, we need the housing, yes, we'll get the taxes and all that. But there's lots of other businesses that would provide commercial economic development, not just housing, to us. And also, I think Ms. Matheny, you know, is definitely right about the terms. You can't approve, in my opinion, responsibly, approve something without knowing the terms. And if the term's one and a half percent, and it's eighteen years, I would say, the eighteen years is totally unacceptable. One and a half percent, despite what our finance director says, you don't know over eighteen years what, what, what you could potentially earn on that money. It goes up and it goes down over eighteen years. And I do think if you do this, which I don't think you should, but if you do it, I think you should get a, a, a quick payback in, like a balloon payment in full, as quickly as possible. But personally, I think it's bad, bad, this is not the kind of economic development that I think we ought to use the fund for. I think we ought to use it for commercial businesses, and we should encourage people to do that. And the best time to do that is when we have a recession. That would've been the perfect time to use this fund to attract people to the area. And we probably will need that in the future. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the office like to speak to this item? Councilmember Trace.
Can someone go into detail about the two, two years now that it's, this has gone? Tried to go to the state for, for funding and. Sure. Before we know that, this has been a long drawn-out process.
Sure, so we've had, this is a, a three-year contract, and we did, the first year we went and applied and didn't get the lottery number. Last year, we did the same, and we paid a little over fifteen thousand dollars for the carrying cost for the bonds that are on this property and property taxes to keep that going as well. And we will do the same thing this year. We will pay all the bonds and property taxes to give us a chance to put that application in. So this is our third year. We've been unsuccessful just because of lottery numbers in the last two years.
Thanks.
After the two years, you're, you're gonna be, if you don't get the lotto, you're, you're gone?
No, I mean, look, we want to keep trying until we can get it, but that's gonna be up to, you know, the board, whether they want to renegotiate another contract or try it again, so. I'm just saying that, that was the most we could get as a three-year contract, and after this year, the three years will be up, and then, you know, if we can, if we can renegotiate another one, we would love to do it, so.
So these two parcels, they're gonna be paid for by you already?
At the closing, yes. If we get the tax credit allocation, we will close on both of these at the same time.
But it's gonna be, in, it's hinged by getting the lotto, right?
Uh, yes, sir.
So in other words, it's just gonna ride and ride and ride. I think we could sell this a lot quicker than what you're gonna get the lotto. I'm sorry.
Well, you only have, well, you only have one more, this is the last year on the contract, and if we don't get it unsuccessful, then you could make that decision at the DSD board not to renew another contract, so.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Didn't we have terms in these, this lot five, six, that if somebody came and tried to buy it, then they had the right of first refusal, but we were still marketing?
Only on the, on five.
So we, we put those terms in there, Chuck, I remember that, like where, where it was so we didn't get stuck, like year after year.
Revolving, yeah.
Right. And we, we, just for, we talked about this at the DSD meeting. One of the, when, when they approached us with this idea, one of the things we suggested was, we'll commit to buying lot five as part of this project. We knew that there was a year left under the contract, and it was either gonna, they were either gonna be successful, or we'd be in a point of having to renegotiate the whole, the whole deal. But at that point, the horizon had gotten very short, the window had shortened, had closed a little bit. And then, we haven't had, just for purposes, we haven't had a lot of information, we've had a lot more recently, but we still have some available parcels in the, in the corporate campus that could be marketed to other folks. And, and we'll, and so we're still working on that, so it's not like we, we've got more buyers than property available either.
Councilmember Trace.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen one eighty-seven R.
We have a motion for approval of Resolution twenty nineteen one eighty-seven R. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew, motion for Trace. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brings us to our city attorney. What do you have for it?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a very exciting announcement to make tonight. I have six of my senior staff members graduating from the Certified Public Manager class this coming week, and I will be the keynote speaker at their graduation. And tomorrow night's the lip sync, be there, be square. Thank you, Mayor. The Certified Public Manager?
No, what's six?
Which six, sorry?
Which six, which?
Um, it's Veronica, Jason Miller, Joe Eder, Andre, Kevin Felblinger, I'm sorry, Joseph Estrus, and Linda.
Congratulations.
Wow.
Thank you.
You guys have cap and gowns.
Awesome.
They do. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Councilmember Matheny.
Okay. First, I would like to say that I've gotten some really sweet phone calls about the park on Virginia and Tenth about some life-changing events that people have experienced there with their grandchildren, and just, you know, interacting with, with children of all abilities have been really, really sweet. I've gone by several times. I'm excited to see that it's so busy. I think we have been super successful in that there's never enough parking spaces, so I don't know what our plan is moving forward with parking, additional parking potentially, 'cause I've seen some people just kinda parallel parked on the road, and I saw on social media some people getting, I guess, harassed by the surrounding properties, I don't know. But, but I think that's a testament to what a great park it is, that we have it so crowded. So I don't know if we can just, is Stephanie still here? Just put that on her radar with the additional, some additional parking. The other thing I wanted to talk to council about is, so in the land development code, when residential and commercial developments come in, it's, there is a requirement in there for amount of open space that's required. And I've talked with Andre about it and was looking at some of the requirements that the city has, and I feel like we give a pretty lenient cut to some of the development as to how they calculate their open space. I'd like to see staff kinda go back and revisit it. When I envision open space, I want it to be like usable, real open space, not, you know, they get fifty percent of the acreage of their pond. I'm like, that's not really, you know, open space, or they get parking lots count as open space. I'm like, that's not really what I envision. I want like real usable green space that, that people can use. And I know the city's done a really good job, that they've tightened up on a lot of the requirements already, where there's not like a two-foot strip along a fence line that gets counted as open space, or, you know, it has to be like usable. But I just wanted to see what the other council members feel, and if you would have consensus for staff to kinda look at those, to try to revisit open space, and look at different, you know, municipalities around us, and just make sure that we're getting real usable space internal to our developments. Do, is there three of you that's interested in that? One, two, three, all right. We got a winner.
Chicken dinner.
And that's it for me. I'll be at the lip sync.
Losing.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Let's go back to the, the new playground. Bill, have you found out about the new toilets?
Yeah, we actually, we actually, well, an alleged problem. We actually have put in additional, larger ADA compliant, and we just are in the process of purchasing a, a trailer that will be air-conditioned, be, dump it like an RV, and then till we can get the bathrooms constructed.
Oh, can I, can I comment on that? I have talked with Ms. Holcamp about that, because I asked her to see what the county does for their parks, because they use composting toilets. They don't have a trailer. It's like, it looks like a real bathroom, but it's, they call it a composting toilet. I know we talked about it at the groundbreaking. I don't know if she had an opportunity to talk to Bob Mindick about it, but I think that's a viable option versus a trailer, so if we could look into that.
This is just a, I think this is just gonna be a temporary fix.
Right.
And because the canary's gonna be replaced or rehabbed, and we're gonna have toilets right there, right?
Correct. If it, the budget passes through the budget process, then the budget for next year to re-revitalize that building.
But then, once those, Portolets, the new one that you're gonna get, we can move that for.
For other events, things we use, that's right.
Yeah, for Christmas and stuff like that.
Correct.
Okay, so no problem with that. And when, when, when are we gonna get that? I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, I'm looking at you.
We're looking at.
Leslie's been on vacation, so I, I think I had to post for ten days. I think the posting stopped on the eighteenth or nineteenth, so we should, I mean, the PO is ready to send to them the first of next week, so however long it takes them to get here.
It's summer.
It's already built, yeah. It's already built.
It's summer and hot, and it smells bad. I can tell you, I, I stopped and walked across the street where the citizens, three different people had a complaint. They called me.
Well, we're, we're working on it as fast as we can.
I know. And it's a lot of, one toilet we had, and all those, all those kids and all the mamas and daddies, that's one spot, not enough.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that. That's all I need there. Bill, and you and I talked about this, can, just my thought, can we slow down all of this paperwork that gets here at the last minute that we're sitting here, and we look at it, it's like, holy mek, oh, we've got fifteen or twenty pages, or we've got forty pages? If we, if we don't get it three days before, the council doesn't look at it, then we don't move or do anything until it goes to the next council meeting. I, I, I think this is just common sense that makes it easier, so that we can look and digest, and at least three days before, at the minimum, we can, anything that comes on this dais. It should be where we can, absolutely don't have a pile of stuff that comes in front of us that, I'm not saying the Stevens plantation, but there was a lot of stuff. And like, the, the twelve items that you brought us, and, you know, for Tallahassee, what we're gonna try and get, you know, if you're gonna talk about it, bring it three days before council meeting, if that's possible, if you can do that. Can you do that?
And, and we did, like I said, for the workshop, that was sent out the week before. I think what we specifically talked about was DSD, and that, again, I've given direction to staff that will make sure that unless that's done a week in advance, it will not come in front of the DSD. With that said, there's sometimes some of those deals come in at the last minute, and we think we have an obligation to show the DSD a contract that was brought forward.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm talking about the city council meetings here.
Sir, we, we put everything out a week in advance, and, and I know we've missed the, the barrel a couple times, you know, with, with PowerPoints, but.
Yes, sir.
You know, ninety percent of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, we're, we're putting out those information ahead of time in an electronic format.
And, and you, you and I talked, and you think you can move some of this stuff around?
I'm gonna work with the clerk. I got an idea that I'll bounce off of her.
I appreciate your help. Thank you, sir. That's, that's the worst thing I had, nothing bad.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I appreciate your help. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Trace.
First, I'd like to thank staff for being here all night. Nine thirty.
And staying awake.
Yeah. Andre, a couple questions?
I haven't heard anything in a while on the residential building standards. Is that still progressing on?
Yes, it is. We are still working on it.
Okay. And then, future land use maps?
So the future land use map has been delayed because council asked us to hold work sessions on the different elements of the comprehensive plan. And so we'll need to work on those elements first. So the future land use map change would be one of the last items, because we've worked through all the different elements to ensure that anything that's added and fighting those would also be reflected in the future land use map.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a, a call this week about a concern about bonding requirements of not getting credit on bonding improvements for, till, till you have a CFC. So still having to put up a hundred percent bond to record a plat before you get CFC? And not getting a credit for, for improvements that were done. It's probably more of an engineering question than a.
That would be.
Certificate of.
Certificate of. So if you want to record a, if you put in ninety percent of your improvements and have those done and want to record your plat?
I'm sorry, Kevin Felblinger, Acting Public Services Administrator. Basically, what Mr. Trace is bringing up is, is people, they'll, they'll get a certain part done, but it's very hard for us to accept infrastructure that we haven't actually accepted yet. And, and as part of the plat, we have to be able to certify that the infrastructure is either in place, or it's bonded. And we had to certify to, 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 the county before they actually record it. And so, like I said, so without us actually being able to, we haven't accepted some of these utilities and that sort of stuff, just because a piece of pipe's put in the ground does not mean it's at a point where it could actually service the properties that they're trying to actually create. And so that, that, that's kinda where we're in, that, that, that little gray area there, where, like I said, I know some people are not happy with that, but they said they have the, always the option to be able to finish their improvements before they, they record their, their plat. But like I said, but it is our current policy that, since we have not accepted the infrastructure, it has not been turned over to the city yet, it's still not, there's, there's still not public infrastructure till it's accepted and turned over to the city.
Okay, yeah, it's just my worry is, sometimes when we get bonds for things, that, that full amount of the bond will never get paid. They'll, the bonding agency will just finish the improvements, pay out that little bit, and then release the bond, right?
I, I agree with you. Like I said, the last time we had to pull a bond, I think it took four or five years for us to be able to get it. And, and it was only a portion of, of the actual bond there.
Yeah, they'll never give you the whole face amount of that bond.
It is a, it is very, very difficult. It's a difficult process. But unfortunately, the alternative is what Kevin just mentioned, is to tell folks you can't, you can't plat your property until your infrastructure's in the ground and accepted, in which case they can't sell, in which case development's never gonna take over, so.
Yeah. My worry with bonds is it never, you'll, you'll never actually, it, it's very difficult to get that money, but if you, if we had a easier mechanism to get the money, if the improvements don't actually get done, and then take the reduced amount, like cash or.
Well, we've, over the years, we, we, we have done some letters of credit, which are, which are easier to do. Cash is a big deal, 'cause some of these infrastructure, you know, you know, some of the infrastructure, that's a, they're big projects. And it's, and then, and, and the bondings, the bonds are, can be a million bucks, and so, it's a lot of cash to set aside.
Yeah, okay. And last question for Chief Gollit. How have the, the committee meetings, have, have you guys had some of the committee meetings already?
Not yet. The next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, we kick off the very first introductory meeting.
So that's next. Nothing. Mr. Askew.
Nothing.
Moving on. And I don't have anything. Brings us to our information section, report section, Monday, September the second, two thousand nineteen. City offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day holiday. Thursday, September the twelfth, two thousand nineteen, there will be a city council meeting, six thirty here in City Hall Council Chamber. Remind you that the report for warrant list number sixteen is available, and with that, we will be adjourned.
Kevin.
Kevin.